Why don't we begin? Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Winchester Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. Just to remind everyone, you are being recorded both through Zoom and via Wind Cam. If you do not wish to be seen or heard, please turn off your video and your audio. We do have a quorum this evening, and I'm going to call out, we have three members with us, four members, now three members. Nancy, I almost made you a member of the planning board. So why don't we start with a roll call? Eching Scott, please say present. Sally Dale.
Present.
And Deirdre is present, and we are, our other member Cheryl Wolf, hopefully will join us soon. This evening, you, we have, we're opening with a public hearing on the zoning articles that the planning board will be presenting to Fall Town Meeting. And the way we do public hearings is that the town planner will make a presentation, and the public hearing is just for the public to have their say in the planning board will. And here comes Town Council, and the planning board will sit back and listen to the comments from the public so that we understand what their concerns are, what suggestions are. In order, we do note, we do not have a chat function in this Zoom, so if you wish to speak, please raise, use the raise your hand function so that we can see that you are, that you wish to speak, and then we will call on you, hopefully in the order that the hands were raised. So at this point, I am going to turn this over to Town Planner Brian Zakelli, who will start the public.
Great, thank you for that, seeing my screen for Fall Town Meeting 2021, everybody? Yes, okay, great, okay. So I'm not going to repeat, Deirdre said, too much, I'm going to go through a slide presentation, and then we're going to go through any letters or public comment, I'm sorry, letters or letters from the public staff boards or committees that are here, President wants to comment, and then we would open it up for public comment, anyone from the floor. So we're going to be talking about two bylaw amendments this evening. The first is the floodplain overlay district to section 8.1 as well as section 10 for the definition sections for the floodplain overlay district. And then the second is the half-story definition, which is just in, just in section 10, the definition section. So I'm just going to go straight in to this. And the objective of this simply is to, to comply with the new National Flood Insurance Program that the NFIP requirements simply so Winchester residents can receive flood insurance. So we have to do this in order so our residents can, can receive flood insurance. So the floodplain bylaw in 1968, there was a National Flood Insurance Act, which basically offers flood disaster relief in the form of insurance if communities adopt and enforce these minimum requirements. And this is a floodplain map of Winchester. We are one of these communities because there are many flooding events in the past, and there may be flooding events in the future. So we have flood insurance here in order to get that flood insurance. We need to make sure that this bylaw is updated. So the state and federal floodplain requirements for construction in and near these specific floodplain categories, they've all been updated, and there's new technical data submissions that, that we will need to do. There, there's a new forms for variances and permits that the, the bylaw talks about at the state level, talks more about recreational vehicles as well as several other definitions in terms of permanent construction. There are many, many changes that have been updated. We can go through those if there are questions, but these are kind of some of the major updates to that. There's different, different definitions for substantial improvement. Again, we have to comply with these. And so really what it is in, in kind of one slide in terms of why we're here is we're trying to reference existing guidelines in order to ensure that the, that the projects that we permit have been reviewed under the appropriate state regs and that community, and that we don't erroneously allow variances to those state requirements. So this is, this is the, the main reason of, of why and how we're, we're doing this. And how we're doing that is through amending section 8.1 and existing floodplain bylaw as well as the definition sections that are associated with that bylaw in order to be in accordance with the new NFIP guidelines. So that is all the slides I have prepared, I believe now, the, I, I can say that I have not received any letters from the public about this in terms of questions. At this point then, if there's any, if there are any staff members that, whether it's Town Council or, or staff here that would want to make any further comments, that would be the time I'm going to give Mina and Beth co-host privileges. And now is the floor for either Beth or Mina.
Thanks, Brian, this is Beth. So as Brian said, the town is required to have a floodplain bylaw, part of our requirement in the National Flood Insurance Program. We currently have an existing bylaw. This is, the state has issued a new model bylaw, and so they are asking communities across the state to update their bylaws to match the state requirements, minimum requirements in that new model bylaw that they've issued. Town Council has reviewed the model bylaw, I think you've made some minor adjustments to it, but for the most part have kept what the state requiring, state recommendations were. And so that's what we're looking to adopt at Fall Town Meeting, thank you.
Brian, I have nothing to add to that, I think you and Beth covered it all.
Wonderful, then I guess this goes back to Deirdre. I am not seeing any hands raised. For those who don't know how to use the user hand function, it's under the three dots where it says more, and you do raise hand, and then we'll unmute and go from there. I see Cheryl has also, Cheryl Wolf has also entered, I'm making her a co, so she can mute and unmute herself at will. So we have a full four-member board. So all seats are filled at the moment.
I, I do believe we do need to ask Cheryl Wolf to say present when we call out her name to make it legal. Cheryl, would you say that you had present?
How about if I start with my face, too? Sorry about that.
It could be another Cheryl Wolf.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, who knows?
Okay.
I am present, thank you, I'm sorry to be late.
No problem, so I think I don't see anyone I agree with, Brian. Why don't we move on to the next article?
Sure. I'm actually, so I'm going to be handing this over to Eching, who's going to let me know to go to when she's ready for each next slide. But so this is talking about the definition of half-story or the definition, story half as listed, both.
Ready for me?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Eching Scott, and we are going to go over perhaps adding additional criteria to the definition of half-stories. And as a backstory, we are pursuing this because there were a couple of cases that came before us where we had to look at some of the, what people were building as half-story, and there were a number of questions of what that meant. So some of the objectives that we have done, identified in presenting this is to, one, clarify the dimensional massing calculations. What does it mean to be a half-story? And then, two, in a bigger picture, to ensure harmony with the size and scale of the surrounding built environment. So, next slide, please. At just as, so to see a background of what we're dealing with, there is an existing definition, and that definition is that a half-story is a story directly under a sloping roof in which points of intersection of the bottom of the rafters and interior faces the walls are less than three feet above the floor level on at least two exterior walls. So this definition, the, the fact that, A, that it's under a sloping roof, that would technically be any, any roof, because even a flat roof is technically a sloping roof to, to shed water. So that in itself is, is, you know, questionable why that's there. But then, the intersection of the bottom of the rafters, the interior faces the wall are less than three feet. If some of you out there might not be understanding what that is trying to do, it is, is three-foot point where, with this drawing is, it has to be less than, and that is to ensure that this, this wall here doesn't extend further out to, you know, make it so that it, it looks, I think, at most maybe like a triple-decker, sort of it's like a kind of rectangular facade rather than something that has a sloping facade. And so what this definition gives us in, in this example, in this graphic example, I'm trying to do it just as a simple, simple, what should we call it, a simple pitched roof would give us something at its extreme with the wall at three feet, like a pitch roof, right, that what we sort of iconically think of as a domestic building, which would be a pitch roof. But what we have been seeing through the planning board are some people who are perhaps, I mean, the colloquial term would be gaming it or hacking it, would, are, are some things that are, you know, something like a gambrel or a mansard where things get a little bit more higher pitched, and you could get more out of that third story than what was intended. I think what was, I, I can't guess what was intended, but perhaps more than what is, I think most people would think. And then the max, it's anything up to, these are just two examples, but it's anything up to the max building height per section 4.0, and which is in most zoning districts would be 40 feet, which is quite generous. And so this is what we're dealing with in trying to figure out a way to perhaps regulate it so that it's not so extreme, like they could, it could become, it, it could become what most people might not think as a half-story. So what our proposal is, is on maybe the next slide, is to keep that initial portion, right, which is the, that the bottom of the roof rafter intersects the interior faces of at least two exterior walls, and that's just to retain a slope, basically. And to then to add, and this was to Sally Dale's credit, she sort of scanned a lot of the, the definitions of surrounding similar towns like Lexington and Belmont and Newton and such, to see what they have defined as a half-story and to perhaps maybe figure out a way to change the dimensions so that things aren't, especially at denser areas of town, become overbuilt. So the second proposal then would be to give a percentage of what would be, we want, we don't want to say habitable or not habitable, but that, there's, there's a volume that, and I'll just read it, the total floor area has a clear height of seven feet or more, is not more than 65% of the total square footage of the floor area of the story directly beneath. So there is a numerator and a denominator, and that numerator would be the calculation of the half-story above seven feet, and that's looking at the square footage of what that might be is, and in this example here, we have a dormer that shuts out, so it's not a complete rectangle. So if there is a dormer, you would add that kind of square footage and calculate that two-dimensional square footage and put that as the numerator, and the denominator would be the story beneath it. And that should not exceed 65%. And from what we were scanning of the various towns, things were around that percentage, 55 to 70, that, that kind of, and it seems like a reasonable amount in that, say, the Y is 1,000 square feet, then the X would be 650 square feet of, you know, above head height, most likely. So that is the addition, and tho, those are our proposals. And I think if we can go to the third slide, I think a lot of people, when we presented this over the cup, various meetings we've had over the past months, where people thinking, you know, what, what does that give us in form? Like what does that, what does that do? And so here are some examples of testing what that might mean. So in the bottom row is the plan, and that's a calculation of 40 feet by 40 feet, as for a simple plan, and looking at a simple sort of a pitch roof. What if it's 40 by 40, what's that, 1,600 square feet? 65% of that would be about approximately that kind of square footage. So in, in a pitch roof at three feet, where the rafter meets the wall at three feet, it would be a pretty, you know, shallow pitch. But if you say wanted a, a bigger expression of pitch, say, you could still achieve that same amount by just like movement, moving that, that, where that intersection meets lower. And the second example is where it meets at zero, right, at zero feet at the, at the second floor. And there are some assumptions with this, a 10-foot-six floor-to-floor heights, that kind of thing, but I, this is sort of just what you would do in order to get a different expression. And at the third example, you know, the rafter meets the wall at lower than the third floor. And so then that gives you a really lovely, you know, sort of gingerbread house pitch. And then at, as, at an extreme where the rafter meets the wall, and there are very few A-frame houses in Winchester, but at that point, you would see that, you know, it's hard to achieve that 65%. And another test that I wanted to see was like, how, how does it, what does that mean perhaps for something that is not traditionally pitched? Could you still achieve that 65% by say, say offsetting from the edge and making, you know, either a penthouse or something? And this is not the best design, but it was sort of just to experiment what that might mean. If it could be an alternate, could we still, if with these rules, allow sort of different expressions? And are, are we, are we, you know, hemming ourselves into certain designs? Or, you know, what does this, what do these two laws do? And so back to the primary points where we were trying to figure out a way to just control the dimensions so that people don't overbuild. And maybe in the second slide, Brian, the one with the two definitions, to actually encourage a building out of the second floor before you build out the third, so to, you know, to sort of allow density but from more of a ground up than, than to build up too high. That's, that's what I have.
Thank you, I do see there's someone from the public with their hand up right now. First, we talked about letters from the public, which there has been a letter that was received. This is when we were talking about this several months ago. I'm just reminding everyone that the the resident had mentioned that there's currently a court case about this related to the half-story, and you know, we had run that, we had run that by council, and I don't, I don't believe there was anything to talk about. But I, I really felt I needed to mention that. Back to the hands, it looks like no one else has, except for someone, a resident, unless some staff or council have anything to say at the moment. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll turn it back to Deirdre, David. Back to Deirdre, and David has the same.
Right, thank you, Brian, thank you, Eching, for the presentation. So David, if you would unmute yourself, identify yourself and where you live, and please give us your, your comments.
David Faganbaum, 38, Rangeley Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Brian, can you page up to the first page of the slide? So my first comment is that I don't think it's a good idea to propose a bylaw to the town meeting where you have an objective that isn't met by what you're doing. It just doesn't make any sense. And item two says to ensure harmony with the size and scale of the surrounding built environment. And this change doesn't do, do that in any way. In fact, it incentivized, this is going to incentivize people to tear down houses and build houses that have half-stories at the top, that number one are not suitable to the, to the build environment around them. And number two are too big, huge. And if you page down to the examples that Eching showed, you'll, you'll see what I mean. So look at this, first of all, let me say, here are four, and then there was a fifth example with no constraint or restriction or suggestion or anything in, in the proposal that says we want your half-story to be consistent with the build environment around the building that you're building. And so you will get, if you adopt this bylaw, the same, the same thing you're getting now, which is like mansions that are 40 feet high and have as an example this, I'm looking at the third example that Eching drew. And and so size-wise, it won't have, it, it'll be the same problem you've got right now. It's, it's a huge, very tall house with a very big half-story on the top. And not only are you going to get those, but now you're probably going to have people saying, well, I, I, look, I'm looking at your bylaw, I'm looking at the drawings of your bylaw, I'm just doing what, what it says there. So that's one aspect of this problem. But a different aspect is if, if you look at the one on the left end. So someone could propose to build that in a, in an, on along a street, let's say, along a street where all of the half-stories at the tops of the buildings are pitched in the way that is Eching said, is iconically what you think of as the pitch of a roof in a residential area in Winchester. And so so you're, I think you're also going to encourage people to propose to build things that don't fit, and then point to your drawings and say, well, here's the example right here. How, how can you tell me I, I shouldn't do this? So that's my first problem, and I think you really need to deal with that, or you're, you're going to invite a worse problem than we have now. The second thing is, if you, could you page up to the amendment? And this, this is going to be a little hard for people to process, I think, but, but you'll see why when I explain it. It's item two, the total floor area has a clear height of seven feet or more, that is not more than 65% of the total square footage. Sounds nice, you can measure seven feet, you know what 65% is? I'm looking at, I have been recently looking at a proposal to build a house that's almost 40 feet high, has a half-story at the top that is by the, by the applicant's view not included in the floor area of the building, and therefore does not require a site plan review or a special permit. And, and the, and actually has, and actually has in the half-story at the top probably 1,500 square feet of space, 1,000 square feet of space. And you would say, well, how do they do that? And the way they do that is they, they've proposed to put the rafter bracing, the cross pieces, I'm, I'm ignorant on the exact term, but it's the truss that pulls, that keeps the roof from collapsing. And they're going to make it so that the height is six feet 11 inches. Says that right on the drawing, six feet 11 inches. So now the space, they're taking the position that that space does not meet another provision of the zoning bylaw, which is not this provision, but uses exactly the same words, seven feet. And it's, it's not clear how one gets around that. How, and how, how a party who feels that that proponent should have to go through a site plan review can be made to do it. And I, and so then the question is, well, well, I'll just say this to you, because you already know it. Seven feet is a magic number because habitable space is considered to be seven feet. Well, I don't, I'm betting that the people who are building that building have created a very large, essentially, third floor, more than 65% of the total square footage, among other things. essentially third floor, more than sixty-five percent of the total square footage, among other things. And, and they're going to build it and not finish that. And then somewhere down the road, they're just gonna, they're gonna finish it and get around the bylaw. And I think if one person proposes to do that, they aren't going to be the only one. So it's an odd factor, but you need to think about that and how you're going to deal with it. I'm done, sort of. Now I'm done. I, I really think, I, I, I've said, this is the third time, I think I've said this in meetings of the planning board. This is not ready to go to town meeting in my opinion. And so I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I have to say and I'm, I'm going to stop.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your taking the time to join us and give us your opinion. Is there someone else who is, who wishes to speak? I do not see anyone with their hands raised. And Nina has disappeared. I don't think he has, we asked for comment in town staff, so I think that that will conclude this part of our hearing. And as we do not have any other articles, any other zoning articles that were prepared to go before town meeting. I think that will conclude our hearing, which I believe we officially have to actually close. And then we can reopen the our standard meeting. So why don't we do, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Anyone can say that except for me, apparently.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Excellent. And is there a second?
I think Sally said something, well, I'll second it.
Okay, eaching seconds, Sally is muted. We'll take a roll call vote, please. Cheryl Wolf. Eaching Scott.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
We have Jerry's eye and that closes our hearing. Public hearing. Again, thank you very much for everyone who's, who participated. And now we will open up our normal planning board hearing. I don't think we need to do a roll call vote on this. And I think that, let's see, our next, I don't know if Beth needs to stick around. I don't think there's anything here for Beth. You want to take off? Appreciate you showing up.
Night, everybody. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
DAB, I believe it's my cue to go as well. This is me.
Okay. Well then, thank you for showing up and we will see you again soon.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we quickly go, we are actually way ahead of schedule. And this means that I owe Brian ice cream.
What?
Brian, I had a bet as to how long the public hearing would last. And I bet it would go longer and he bet it would go shorter. And so I owe Brian some ice cream and I will owe everyone on the board ice cream. So we will set up a date and we'll go for an ice cream.
Please.
Okay, so why don't we go into a regular routine here? Updates, Brian, you want to take us forward with on the updates?
Sure. Um, so I think the biggest thing that's kind of really today, I guess, and this is not actually something that new, but it's something that we're going to be we're going to, we should be thinking about, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. As in the, the town of Winchester received six point eight million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act from the federal government to use in various ways. There are a lot of different ways that the town could benefit from this. But several key ways that we would be involved in, and are you sorry, I'm going a little fast here. Are you guys looking at this? Town, it says town of Winchester, okay, so we have six point eight million dollars that specifically for the town of Winchester. They can be used for any number of things, one being COVID nineteen mitigation prevention. So obviously the Board of Health is going to have a whole bunch of requests here to, to do what they need to do, behavioral healthcare. So this is HR at every level in terms of potentially schools or anywhere that it's, it's needed. Specifically assistance to households, so food assistance, rent assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance in winter, wintertime, internet access. And then where the, where specifically the planning board goes or gets involved is I think in this numbers four and five. And I'm not going to go too deep here. I'm just going to say that this is something that we should be thinking about, we should have in order to give some type of a small set of recommendations really to, to the town manager of what we think we could be using these related to small business and nonprofit. You know, business health to, to help businesses in need. And then a lot of this money, cities and towns can choose to use to go towards mixed income and affordable housing developments. So a lot to think about. That was a whole bunch of information that we just got this afternoon. So sorry for throwing it so quickly, but that's a big update. This is a lot of money. Everyone's going to be kind of wanting this money because there's some big money, which means it could do some big change. Pause there for a second and then, okay, so tomorrow the Rangeley Park Heritage District is meeting. They haven't met in a bit. They, the last time they met, they, they added a property and now they're looking to see what they can do to expand the district. Because they're really, they think it's really great for the neighborhood and for the town and they want to kind of keep it going. So that's happening tomorrow. Another important or not a specific date is September twenty-first. September twenty-first, there's a downtown action plan parking meeting. So the town has hired tool design to look at the center in the public realm to see what improvements could be, could be done, physical infrastructure kind of things. So the easiest way to say it is, you know, sidewalks and bump outs and parklets and this type, these types of things. Thirty thousand dollars of that project is related to parking, the short meeting and long term. The short meeting during the NBT construction, the long term meeting afterwards, when we have two hundred and fifty minutes of downtown over the next, you know, five to ten years, whatever it might be. So that's September twenty-first. It's a kickoff meeting specifically for parking. So this is not, it's, it's a larger project o- o- over a hundred thousand dollar project that, that this is doing, but this is just the parking piece that a lot of people are very, very interested in the business community and outside. So that's happening September twenty-first. I will stop there. Because I feel like I've been talking too much.
Can I ask a question about, I'm sorry, go ahead, DAB.
No, go ahead.
So you said, this is just the parking piece. I'm curious. That's the thirty thousand. The hundred thousand involves additional money towards what?
Alright, so I don't have that. So I have the parking scope that I can send out. I do not have a hold of that. It's actually fifty thousand dollars is the other portion. So it's actually a total of eighty K for what's called the DIAP, the Downtown Improvement Action Plan. So this is a, a, something that the select board and and engineering and DPW and planning and the town manager's office that we, that has been cooking for some time now. At the direction, at, at the policy direction of the, of the select board over the past oh, I want to say certainly more than a year, that's for sure. So this is not like out of, out of this is not something new, but it has grown in this parking piece. So that's, that's what's, that's what's kind of new and that grew about four months ago. I want to say April, May, that this parking piece was added. So this is now starting that. Like I said, a lot of people are really interested in this. A lot of people, yep, sorry. Oh, sorry, I don't know. So there's a lot of people on both sides of, of this issue saying that we have a huge parking problem or we don't have a parking problem at all. Or so, so this is going to kind of hopefully help with that and show what we need in the short and the long, in the long term. DAB.
Yeah, so unfortunately I have to keep turning my video off because my internet connection is flaky. So I am here. So so I, 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 you say that this downtown improvement action plan has been in the works for a while. But we haven't really seen much of it and no one's really come to the planning board asking us for our opinion about the downtown, which is a fairly important chunk of what the planning board cares about. So how do we make sure that we are in the loop on this?
So that, so that is my job to not only advocate for planning board positions in this, I mean, but because there isn't there isn't a planning board member on, on this. I mean, it's, it's really just staff. There's no, there are no boards and committees outside of, I believe one select board member.
Okay.
So if it's, and so if it's, I guess if, so right now that's me to help inform, inform you. So that's, that's something that
Yeah.
It was not always, it was not always called the down, it was called several things in over over the past year. So so it's possible that.
Okay, it's possible. Um, I, I, you know, obviously this is incredibly important to us. So let's, let's make sure that we're kept abreast of everything that's going on. And Sally, did you want to talk about this or can I jump to something else?
Oh, I, I, I want to follow up on your excellent comment, DAB, that, you know, the, the planning board is the central permit or is the permit granting authority, special permit granting authority for the central business district. And that is synonymous with downtown. And so if there is a downtown improvement action plan, what is the A?
Action.
It, it, it's, it's seems to me extremely logical that there would be a member of the planning board participating in that conversation, number one. And number two, six point eight million dollars is, you know, it's a significant infusion of project money into the town. And I guess I just would like more information from you, Brian, on, on what is the process by which the town is, is allocating and expending that money. I see you smile. It must be
I don't, no, I don't. So I don't, we just got this, we got this email from the manager today.
Oh.
Yeah, DAB and, DAB and I got this today. I was checking my email before the meeting. It was something like it was sent, I don't know, five or something.
Sally, are you crossing over the two topics here, maybe?
Well, well, so they, yeah, they are, they are definitely two questions, separate questions. Thank you, Cheryl, for clarifying.
Yeah, the, the, the ARPA stuff is, is brand new. I don't think that there has been I don't think we can answer that question.
Okay, so I didn't realize how new it was. Thank you for that clarification.
The one thing that Brian, I, I don't think that was in that document or maybe I missed it, is when the deadline for input to the town manager is.
Yeah, so
So.
I don't think it actually has a, has a timeline.
I can't find my little yellow hand.
September twenty-second, sorry, September twenty-second.
Okay, so we would have a month to give inputs, which is
September twenty-second, yeah.
Okay, Cheryl, your human works.
So because I'm on the capital committee, the capital planning committee, I just thought I would raise that two, two things is that I will ask tomorrow night whether or not, or we may hear about this particular rescue plan act. I don't know yes or no on that, if that somehow will impact or be channeled by the capital planning committee. But I also would say that, that the town engineers have put as one of their, their number one priority is a traffic study for downtown. And so I would say that it would be interesting to know if the DIAP and the traffic study are talking to each other in any way.
I believe it's the same consultant, so.
Okay. Alright, they, they don't usually talk about where that money is being spent. They just talk about a lump sum and, and you know, they've identified a certain amount of money for a traffic study and, and put that as a number one priority. So I, I would imagine that all of us on the planning committee probably would be in favor of, of that being, that money being spent so that we can better understand some of the decisions or comments that we make on the developers building downtown or building around town. That's more sharing than a question. Just thought I'd let you guys know.
Well, thank you.
Um, yeah, we, yeah, no one knows exactly how that's going to go after September.
Right.
In general, so.
So I wanted to make a couple more announcements or, or make a couple comments in this update section. So last week, the first meeting of the water field lot task force met last, I've already forgotten when it was, last Tuesday, really. And Brian, do you happen to have the, the date for the next one?
Um, yeah, it's September thirteenth. They first, they first met last Wednesday, the twenty, the August, August twenty-fifth, and they meet next September thirteenth.
It is
At four o'clock. It's an afternoon meeting. It's at four o'clock.
Right, and it is being taped. It will be on wind cam. It is, it is extremely, an extremely important set of meetings which will determine how the town moves forward with its negotiations with Civico. And the public are invited to send in comments. There will be a chance for public, public to speak at one of these meetings. And they're also pleased if you have written comments are, will be accepted through, I believe, September the sixteenth. If I get that right. So I, I, I invite everyone to look at, to, to attend these meetings so they can get a good idea of what the issues are with the water field lot and how we are going to move forward with it. It is the it's the largest chunk of affordable housing we're going to have in the center business district ever. So it's an important thing. The other update I wanted to mention is that on Monday, Cheryl, Brian and I met with the architect for eighty-eight Harvard. And I think that the architect is receptive to our concerns. And they are going to go off and they've under, I think they understood all the historical, the concerns of the historical renovation. And they will be reaching out to a member of the historical commission to see what can be done about the double front doors or other things like, things like that. So I think that that's going along fairly well. Okay, I think that's it for updates on this. Sally, your hand is up?
Well, I, I had a question, going back to the, the task force comment period. So will the planning board be submitting a comment beyond what we've already submitted to this task force, making any specific points that we might wish to discuss and endorse? And the related question is, are we as individual members of the community not with our planning board hat on permitted to write letters to the task force to express our own personal views?
to express our own personal views as opposed to those that would be agreed upon by the board?
Um, to answer your second question, yes, of course. As a resident of Winchester, you have retained full rights to expressing your opinion as a resident. As long as you make it obvious that that is the role in which you are expressing your opinions, that's perfectly. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the task force is looking in particular, they're, they are, their brief is to order a set of six priorities for the negotiations. Um, I don't have those priorities in front of me. If this board wishes to talk about that, we do actually have to put that on the agenda. And so our next meeting is the fourteenth.
Yeah. So, well, technically at the moment, we have a joint meeting scheduled also on September thirteenth. The same night as the water field lot, well, the water field lot task force meeting is at four o'clock, but then we have a seven o'clock meeting because we're hopefully, or we're not hopefully, we're interviewing candidates for planning board member, for the fifth planning board member. So that's what we're doing at seven o'clock. So I don't know, eight or eight thirty, we, and then the select board is going to meet. We could meet, you know, that, that night to, to talk about this, but otherwise it's, it's individual members. So DAB, that's just the time that we, yeah.
So the deadline for written comments is the sixteenth, so.
It is the sixteenth, so we, oh, so, so, yeah, so we will have the fourteenth to do that.
We would, we could have, have a discussion on the fourteenth to see if this board wants to say something. Um, so we, why don't we, why don't we schedule that then?
Okay.
And, uh, unless somebody wants to hold a special meeting before then. But I doubt that anyone wants to do that. We've had a lot of meetings.
So, so, so if I understand what we're doing on the fourteenth is we're having a, a short planning board discussion to agree on the points of if we do decide to do a letter in the public comment period to the waterfield lot task force.
Yes.
That letter would say.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, the only, it's also something that Brian and I should probably talk to legal about in the sense that we would be the special permit granting authority for that site, and we would have to see whether or not there are any conflicts in us doing so.
Right.
But, um, the other update, which I've forgotten, is that Brian and I met with Mina yesterday to discuss, um, whether or not, how large, uh, how, whether or not we are, any subcommittees we form are, are subject to open meeting law. Um, and it's a complex issue. I won't, I won't go into it in detail now. Um, but essentially two, two people from a public body, when they get together, could actually form a subcommittee, which would be, um, subject to the open meeting law, um, how you define, it depends on what they're doing, the formality of the group. And so, um, I will write up a short understanding of my, of what I believe came out and send that to the group. And we are going to have a, um, a, in, uh, early October, probably Mina will be doing a, uh, training on open meeting law. Um, but in the, as we go forward, it's with subcommittees, we will have to keep that in mind. Anyway, um, I don't want to get us too far away from our actual.
Right.
Schedule. So if there are any other updates, then no other updates. Um, why don't we jump into the meeting minutes? We do have a meeting minute to approve?
So I, I reviewed the meeting minutes and I have no edits, but just one question.
Okay, uh, Brian, are you, are you scrolling? I see you've got the packet in front of us.
Yeah, I'm just trying not to give everyone a headache, so I have a pause, but okay, here I am. No, um, scrolling through twenty-five pages at fifty pages an hour.
There we go.
Anyone, so here we go.
Okay, um, go ahead, please, Sally.
So my question on number two updates, Chair Dia, Chair Jarius, sorry. Um, the third line says that, um, the, uh, there's a joint meeting of the con- conservation commission and the planning board on September fourteenth. Am I correct, um, that subsequent to this conversation, which was on August seventeenth, that is the meeting that has been moved to the twenty-eighth, or is it a different meeting that has been?
Uh, yeah, that one, so that's, they're coming in specifically on the fourteenth to talk for twenty minutes about ten Converse Place only. But that, um, they're just, and then they will come back, uh, at a different time that we have them scheduled to actually have a joint meeting to talk about larger issues, but that's just a twenty minutes. So that's still happening, even though, um, that's not the night of the hearing. They are still coming to talk to, to give us their opinion of, of the, uh, of, um, the project.
So, and then the thing that is happening on the twenty-eighth, it's, I, if I'm not mistaken, it's not a hearing, it's a presentation to the planning board by the applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Which is a public.
Oh, it is a hearing that constitutes.
Yeah, yeah, we're opening up a special permit hearing on the twenty-eighth, yeah.
Excellent. So that's very helpful clarification, and I don't have any other edits to the minutes, but I appreciate taking a minute to clarify.
Okay, uh, are the, does anyone else on the board have any edits for these minutes?
I do not.
Okay, uh, Cheryl?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, uh, would someone please make the motion to accept the minutes for the planning board meeting on Tuesday, August seventeenth at twenty twenty-one?
I would both to approve these minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, each in seconds. Roll call vote, please. Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Uh, Echin Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Oh, wait a second. Cheryl, you can't vote. I so, I'm sorry. You are not present. I just realized I, I miss, I misread. So.
Uh, August seventeenth. Okay, thank you.
So we will, we will strike your vote. Let's try that again. Um, roll call vote, Echin Scott?
Aye.
Uh, Sally Dale?
Aye.
You have Jarius, I, three, zero, one abstaining. Minutes are approved. Thank you very much, Nancy. A great job as usual.
Thank you, Nancy.
Um, now let us move on to town meeting articles discussion. So, uh, we have two things that we need to discuss here, I believe. One is to take into account the comments we received this evening on the half-story definition. The other is to consider a warrant article to make the master plan implementation committee a special committee of town meeting. So because that is not a zoning article, we do not have to have a special hearing for that, and the town manager has a hearing, a public hearing for all other articles, and so it can be presented there. And, um, one of us, or probably myself will be there to answer questions about that.
So, quick question, do we know the date of the town manager's hearing?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, thanks.
So why don't we, um, I think we have an hour set aside for this. I, I, Brian has stopped sharing. That's not very nice of you, Brian. But, um, I'm guessing we have like, and we have eight, four, we, we have until nine, so we have half an hour right now. So why don't we spend the first ten minutes talking about the issues that were brought up for the, um, the half story? And, um, the comments that were brought up was that, I think the biggest one was that the objectives of this article were not met by the changes that were suggested. And that this would provide an incentive to tear down houses. So why don't we, um, why don't we talk about those? I can go backward, yeah, but.
Well, I just want to say I have found this exercise to be, um, confusing. Um, and right when we took up this question, um, the first thing I noticed was that the definition of one thing is, um, has, has an impact on and is related to the def- definition of another thing. So that one of the very early documents that I produced for this board's review was a list of definitions of a whole bunch of things that are related, like attic or cellar or, 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 um, floor area or whatever. Um, and the question of habitable space, I know, I remember, Brian, you made a comment to me that we don't discuss habitable space. We discuss the, the, the shape of spaces. And we leave it to the international building code and/or an individual property owner to determine if it's habitable or not. Um, but the, the, the thing that concerns me is, um, for instance, the whole question of how does any particular language in any particular definition incentivize or prevent any particular outcome? And I find this to be really confusing. So I just have to confess that to our board and the camera.
Well, I think that it's, it's actually not up to the, um, developer or the owner to determine whether something is habitable or not. That is very well regulated. Um, and so there, it, it really isn't up to them to say this is habitable or not habitable. So that might answer that part of your question. Whether we, something make incentivizes or not, I think is a matter of opinion. Um, so I, I don't, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, do they want to chime in on whether they think this incentivizes taller structures?
One of the things that, sorry, Echin, you should go.
No, 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 go ahead, Cheryl.
One of the things that came to my mind as I was trying to process, um, what the speaker was, um, was getting at, um, is to say that if there's a forty-foot maximum and a two and a half story height limit, how, how is it that we are ensuring harmony with the size and scale of the surrounding built environment for new construction and alterations? I, I think that there's very little chance that something is going to be forty stories, I mean, forty feet high and two and a half stories. And I, I give credit to Echin for her hacking, because I think that made it very clear. But I think what, what is confusing, and I think what he was trying to say is that when you look at those drawings, and it may just be the presentation of the information that is more, um, more what he was getting at, um, is that it suggests going to forty feet and still getting, still meeting the two and a half story, um, limit. Do you know what I mean?
Yes. Can I add? I do think that the inclusion of these graphics was to, um, try to stir up some conversation and things to look at and to, and to discuss. But in presentation to the town meeting or in incorporating any of this into the zoning bylaws, we would, we would not do any of these things, because I think that people see this maybe without knowing how, how the, without, without as much knowledge as say, an architect or, or builder might have about building, would see this as a blueprint for building, but it's not. It's, it's really trying to figure out where the limits are. So this was not to include in the zoning bylaws at all. And maybe the presentation of it, along with the text, was confusing.
I, I completely agree. I think you were, um, iterating the problem of crafting the language by using graphics. And I think that he was the public and he, he chewed right through it. You know, so I think we, we don't, we don't, um, I know, we just, we learned a lot from his, the way that he understood the information that was delivered, so, and how it was delivered.
And I think it was in Newton, is that correct, Sally? Whereas some of the zoning language actually did include some graphics, and they were helpful without making it too confusing or too didactic. And I think if we could find a way to use graphics to elucidate rather than to, um, you know, craft one road, um, I, I think that would be good into, into like encourage imagination rather than just say, this is how it is.
But if we go back to objectives, how do you, how does everyone feel about the way that he challenged the objectives? Or do you, do you think that they were being challenged by the graphics, or were they being actually challenged by what he had to say?
I, I think that he came at this thinking that this was an issue because of new housing being built. We don't have an awful lot of new, we do certainly have tear downs, but most of the work that's done in town is renovation. And so the biggest effect this will have is on renovations, not on new construction. And Echin, um, you did some research at, looking at the size of homes that were being built above a certain price range. And you wanna, you wanna, I'm gonna get it wrong, so.
I was trying to get, um, examples maybe of who, who is doing this and why this law might, might be, where it might be impacting things. And from my understanding of this, and I can see how maybe the public might see this, is that we're trying to deal with McMansions. And so I was looking at like two million dollars and above in the last twelve months and what was being sold and what the, what the form looked like. And to be honest, like there weren't any of the new constructions that were really violating any of this, especially in like a twenty thousand square foot lot with the, you know, uh, yeah, two thousand square foot, like building footprint, like you could do whatever you want and still get a six thousand square foot house without violating any of this stuff. So what, um, talking to DAB was, i- i- it helped understand what this was about, maybe is more of the higher density parts of town where lots are smaller and somebody wants to add to their fifteen hundred square foot house and add to the, to the roof. Um, and it just gets to be a little bit overbuilt and too much building per vol- volume um, of the, the space to, you know, it just gets a little bit too dense. And we want to try to figure out how to allow light and, and sort of a, a scale that is more, um, human scale rather than overbuilding. And I think, um, you know, dormers, like you said, Sally, things, things, you know, they touch each other. Dormers do address that. The more than fifty percent, you need a special permit. That addresses the, the half-story issue. But I think with the sixty-five percent issue, it, it adds an additional lever so that when you are overbuilding or if you are trying to test the limits, it, it sort of just automatically clamps it down so that you cannot do that unless you want to go through a whole ordeal. So it's not, it's a, it's not about the multi-million dollar homes that we, that a lot of people are having an issue with. It's really, um, it's really about, you know, the, the regional demand for housing and space and like people trying to make do with what they have in smaller slots.
Right.
And it just gets too, too much. How do we, how do we regulate that?
But they're not allowed to build more than two and a half stories, right?
Correct. Yeah. But then if we do the sixty-five percent, right, um, then you cannot build it, I guess, we're back to the triple decker again, right? I mean, it's, 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 it's that kind of.
But a triple decker is three stories.
You're gonna have an effect, the, the, the key is, I, from my perspective is that. You're gonna have an effect, the, the, the key is, I, from my perspective, is that we, we wanna encourage people to build things that don't look like they are a third story. And so, and that is the reason we have the dormer special permit, if you wanna have wide dormers. And this would also discourage people from putting in essentially the gave, the, uh, the drawing that Yicheng had in the beginning, where you're essentially flattening, or you're, you're making your, your sloped roof vertical in order to get more space and to turn it into something that looks like a triple decker.
Right. I mean, a mansard roof is an example of that, Deb, that, that it, that it's a basically a flat roofed building. And Cheryl, maybe I'm using the word mansard wrong, so I invite your critique, but that a mansard roof has a very steep pitch that culminates in essentially a flat roof at the top. And the, the, the result of that is well over sixty-five percent of the floor beneath.
Yeah.
And so what we're essentially saying is you can have a mansard roofed building, but it, it can't be two and a half stories. It can't be considered two and a half stories. It would be considered three, because the, the space over seven feet of clear headroom is more than sixty-five percent of the story below.
There are mansards that would use sixty-five percent. I mean, I think that the sloping of it from all sides, and then, you know, not building on maybe the second part of the addition.
Yeah. So maybe what we need to do is to review the objectives. I think, I think that there is, we, we, we do have an objective which maybe we just need to rewrite the two that are in front of us right now, so it's more specific. And to bring in, I mean, again, a lot of people are thinking about new building, you know, new, new structures. And if we can bring in that sort of context, that we're also looking at renovations. I, I don't see that this, the language on this will incentivize anyone to tear down. If someone's gonna tear down a house because they can't build a large attic, I, I, they're gonna be tearing down that house anyway. I, I think that the, I, I don't, I don't believe this incentivizes any sort of additional tear downs. And I don't know that it incentivizes people to build taller roofs, because those are much more expensive. So.
Yeah. And I wanna say that I don't think that a taller roof is, is a bad thing, as long as it stays within the height limitations of the total structure. In fact, I prefer a steeper pitched roof. This is a personal aesthetic to a shallow roof. And I, I just think it looks more historical, it looks more classical, it looks more appealing to me personally. It's very personal. And because, because in New England, you need steep roofs to shed snow, so it feels like a more indigenous style of architecture.
Yes, pre-climate change, I agree with you, yes. Post-climate change, we need, who knows what we need. I think that we could, the other, the other point that was made was about the seven foot versus, I think, the six foot eight. And so maybe, and so there is, you know, if you are gonna claim that something is six foot eight and it is habitable area, and you are gonna, so I don't, I don't, I don't understand completely the, the new development that was being spoken of. But we could simply change the height. So instead of saying seven feet, it's no more, we could simply say habitable area cannot be more than sixty-five percent.
Well, no, no, because the habitability part, I mean, we, we talked about this, it, it, and people can just say it's storage, and then it's, it's, it's within, right?
No, if it's habitable, it has a particular definition though.
I, I P C. I B C. International Building Code.
Yeah, so it really does, it's not just a, it's, it's not a vague term.
Brian, you mentioned to me.
But it is by use too. I mean, for a kitchen and bath, you can do six, eight. And then for everything else, it's seven, six, isn't it? So, so, you know, there are other towns who just limit it by like, say, more than ha- five feet. You can just say that. You can just determine a vertical calculation.
Yes, I think, I think Newton does say five feet.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sure. I was just trying to, but yeah, if, if the concern is that this will be, that people will that if whatever height we give is actually too tall, and so people could actually build, let me call it habitable for want of a better term, space and get more than sixty-five percent of habitable space because the seven feet limit is too tall, then reducing it to five feet, I think, would be better.
So if we said that no more than sixty-five percent of the floor area of that story can be, have, have a clear height of five feet or more, that makes it a flatter roof. Right?
Yes. Or no?
Just a lower ridge.
Well, a lower ridge.
Yeah, a little lower ridge.
A lower ridge results in a flatter, I mean.
Or just a smaller, uh, just a short roof line. I mean, we just have like massing of a streetscape that has, is.
Right. But again, we're, I mean, I think we're, again, we're focusing on new construction when we talk about lower ridges. Because, you know, people are gonna work with, if, if we're talking mostly about renovations, people are gonna work with the the roofline they have. They're not gonna pop the roof or change its, 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 its grade.
Well, they very well could. I mean, we, we looked at a property on York that, that specifically asked for a waiver of a dormer length, specifically because they wanted to make the third floor. I don't know if it was habitable, they didn't ever use that word, but I certainly felt like that was the plan.
Right, but they weren't changing the slope of the roof.
No, but they were, but, but a dormer is, is a modification to a slope of an area of a roof.
Yeah, but if you wanna, in terms of construction, if you wanna actually change the entire slope of a roof, that's a, that's a significant job. That requires, that's a lot more effort.
Yeah, it's like reframing the whole roof. I get that.
Um, so, I mean, so just, I wanted to introduce one other concept, which is that if we were to reduce the height, but also allow a special permit to go above that sixty-five percent, would that provide an escape valve so that people would not produce squatter-looking buildings if we're looking at if we're worried about shallow versus steep roof lines?
I, you know what, I, I think this whole thing is, is really proportional all the way around. I mean, even the hacking that, that Yicheng did is, has to do with, you know, the, the proportions of the footprint. And it's really, it's really hard to take this out of context. And I think that it's also, we brought up dormers, we also have rules about dormers. If you had, if you had a existing roof and you were gonna do adaptive reuse and you wanted to encourage someone to use their attic space, it, it would be a, it would be a renovation of dormers, basically.
Right.
So I, I just, I think it's really hard to to talk about, I mean, we've narrow in, not, we've narrowed in on this, but I, I think, Deb, you were going back to the objectives. I'm not sure that we can take, create, we can support the second objective by with a half-story rewrite. Or maybe it's just a matter of rewording number two, but and then clarifying the dimensional and massing calculations is, is good. We're adding the percentage of floor area, which probably will limit, not only limit the new construction, but it will also, it will temper the the dormers. Cause do, are we talking about the, isn't there a limit to the length of a dormer? A shed dormer in our bylaws?
If there is, it's, you need, it's a, it's a, you, you can overcome that with a special permit.
Okay. But it is limited to fifty percent without special permit. Right. So, so I think, I think the clarification of dimensional enassing, I, I'm massing really depends on, on whether it's a new roof or an existing roof, but then the word goals is in here, and I'm not sure that we've clarified what that is.
So I just wanna point out a procedural thing, is that we do not have to make a final decision on whether or not this goes forward tonight, but we do have to make a decision on the language, because we have to get it in by the tenth.
Of September to be in the warrant for the November town meeting.
Right. So after that point, we can decide to with, with, to whatever, we, we, we can decide not to go forward with it using whatever procedural procedure there is.
But the objectives aren't part of the language that we're putting into the zoning bylaw.
That's correct.
Sort of just to frame the question.
Yes, thank you. Very good point.
And then number two, to ensure harmony, I mean, that takes a lot of tools to ensure harmony with the surrounding environment. And this is one of the many tools that one could use to do that.
So maybe.
I don't wanna say that this, this solves it all. I mean, this isn't, this is too small to solve that.
So maybe the word in, in, ensure might be a little broad, so we could come up with a, a, a word which indicates it is part of the toolbox.
To support.
To support. So I think, why don't, why don't we, I think that we should, why don't we, for the rest of our time on this, just look, not at this presentation, but look at the actual wording and see whether we wanna tweak it. And again, I think the key, the key question before us is do we wanna change the height?
From seven feet to something less.
To something less.
Right.
Six feet, five feet.
Well, right.
There are lots of variables here. There's a seven feet, there's a sixty-five percent.
I, I think seven makes the most sense, because it, it relates to what's required for habitable space. If you go, oh, it doesn't make sense to me at all, I'm sorry.
Uh, I would, I would agree also that seven feet is the same whether we use for floor area for site plan review in general. So it's just like, there'd be no reason, I would say, if you're going to change, and if that, if the one question before you is, should we change this height of seven? There's no, under, I, I don't think there's any circumstances that right now in the bylaw, the whole zoning bylaw, it makes sense to change that to anything but seven.
So that's really interesting, because I heard earlier in this conversation, this, Brian, I think you brought it up, that there was a, a proposal to, to build a new building, I guess, but they were skirting the triggering of site plan review by saying that the finished floor area above seven feet was not at this threshold, because they did it at six eleven instead.
Six eight.
What was it, six eight?
Six eight. That was, that was with Mr. Farganbaum.
Oh, he said six eleven, I thought, too. It was just like one inch below.
One inch below, right. And, 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 now I lost my point. Um, uh, I find this so confusing.
So the question, I think, is if we put it at six, at seven feet, will this suffer the same fate?
No, because I think the, 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 what we're saying is that if it's seven feet or greater, it has to be less than two-thirds of the area. Let's say they come in and they say it's six eleven. Right, then they don't count that in the finished floor area calculations.
Right, but then it also can't be habitable space. So if, there is, they're, meaning legally, they can't, they can't list it as that, that that is habitable.
It, it affects their market. It affects their red, you know, their bottom dollar. They can't market it as an extra hundred feet, or a hundred square foot.
That's right. It's, it's not marketable.
So it makes sense to do seven, because we only care about, that's what, that's what we care, that's what people care about, meaning developers or anyone who's trying to make space in their attic. They care about space.
One, one thing I heard, Yicheng, you said that for certain types of uses in a home, the required ceiling height is left.
Yeah. Isn't that true, Cheryl? I, I thought it was kitchen and bathroom, like, seven feet, and then for the, everything else, it was seven, six. According to the building codes.
Yeah, I, I do commercial space, so I can look it up for us. That's not a problem. But six, eight is ADA clearance. But I'm pretty sure for residential, which is a special Massachusetts code, it's not in the I B C. Or it's to be just, just.
I have the I B C here, and it says rooms that are considered habitable rooms, such as living rooms or bedrooms, are to be at least seven, six in height. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, storage rooms, or laundry rooms may be seven feet.
Wow.
But what they're listed as, is they're listed as seven feet tall, and they're listed as bonus room. So that's, that just gets through all that. And what they do is they throw, and yeah, there's, so what? So there's a bathroom in the, in the bonus room. Who cares? What are you gonna do about it? So, so that, I know what you're saying, but basically in what's hap- what, how it happens here is that if it's seven feet, that's a, that's a bedroom or whatever. You, you know, I mean, that, I mean, but it's, it's, it's labeled legally on the plans as bonus room, or something like that.
Right. For somebody like me, it's like two foot clear of me. And so, yes, it's completely, I can do whatever I want in that room.
And someone like me would be very unhappy.
Yeah.
So why don't, so, um, just to bring us back to moving through this, I think that the consensus seems to be that seven feet is something we'll stick with. And do we, are there any other changes? Do we want to consider making this a special permit thing, or just making it a, or changing the sixty-five percent? We can leave it there?
So the, the, oh, Cheryl, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead. I, I.
Yeah. The only, the only thing, I, I, and I hate to rehash a conversation that Yicheng, you and I have had before, but I just feel like, um, a person could have a house that is one and a half stories. Or, or, yeah, it's one and a half stories. And so, and what I'm getting to is the language of the floor area of the story direct, directly below.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. This would be just to regulate the last story. So in, in that zone, you're probably allowed to be two and a half. So build up however you want. You can do a flat building up to two feet, or two stories. That'd be fine.
Right, okay. Two and a half stories, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So my, my, my concern was just if they were wanting to expand the half story of one portion of the house, but the, the whole of the house is more than just what's under the area they want to expand.
But they, as long as they can, if, if, if they're taking a one and a half story, they can put an extra story on there however they want.
Right, right. I think my, I, yes, I think my point is collapsing in front of me. So good, good.
It's okay. Not the house, just the point.
No, this whole thing is a house of cards to me, but I'm.
I, I think that the special permit would be nice, Deb, because like, if we're talking about a building that has a duplex in it, you know, the, the use of more than sixty-five percent on the third floor would be helpful. Right? So then one, like, when Sally and I came up with this in the beginning, we were like, well, for, it would be a different law for, say, duplexes or triplexes, because the third floor is useful. And we wanna encourage that. But it's not here now. So.
And we, and we also abandoned that notion of changing the standard depending on the number of habits of, of number.
So there could be special cases. So there could be special cases where it's necessary to do sixty-five percent.
I do want us to be cognizant of the time, we do have one other article to talk about.
Good, let's do it.
So, well, let's finish this off, so, um, the only thing left on the, on to discuss is whether we. Add in the option of going over sixty-five percent by special permit. Is, does, is there a feeling from the board that that is? A useful addition?
Well, I think it's an inev, it's an inevitable outcome, because whether they do it by a special permit or by an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. It results in the same sequence of events, does it not?
No, because if there is no appeal. If, if it's deemed to be greater than sixty-five percent, and it's not allowed under the zoning, then it's not allowed, they can't appeal that.
I see. Thank you.
It's just allowing, right now this says you can't go over sixty-five percent, period, if, ands, or buts, if, if you're already there, okay, but you, there's no, there's nothing new that's happening that would allow this.
Um. I, I don't think we would want to invite a special permit exception, Yicheng, what would be the argument for doing so?
I would say so, because if we're seeing like more than fifty percent of, um, for dormers. Uh, and people are coming with legitimate reasons, like they need to build a staircase, because it's, you know, or that kind of thing, if we're allowing that, why wouldn't we allow it for more than sixty-five percent here? Because we're talking about similar spaces and the use of the third floor.
It'll, it allows to bring in the umbrella of a pre-existing non-conforming condition, where like somebody has a, like, um, a small parcel. Um, so the house is, so that, that top floor is actually, you know, there's not that much square feet, they're redoing it. And then they would at least have an opportunity to, you know, just like any other special permits that we see on a regular basis, so like. If, on its face, it seems like if you're totally fine with, if with number two and want to move forward with number two. That you probably should allow some type of pre-existing non-conforming. Protection and process for that, and that's easy to just add in, you know.
Right, I see. Okay, thank you for that.
So let's, let's look at that, so essentially what we're going to be doing is saying. Um. Is a clear height of not more than sixty-five percent. And then somewhere in there, we say, except by special permit.
Right, we would, we would refer, we would reference, just like we always have, when we, we initiated a special permit, we, we would be the criteria in nine point four point two. And it would just, you know, it would, it would, it would just set up that special permit process the way. It's been set up for many years.
Right.
So. Um, why don't we, why don't we, um, why don't we move to a vote on this then? So that we are all agreed. If we are or not, we'll just make a motion to accept the language that's in front of us with the. With an amendment to allow. Um. Greater than sixty-five percent by special permit with appropriate language to be introduced.
And Brian, are you, are you the source of, of crafting the language to make it?
That would be, that, that would just be a note essentially to legal to say, make this also have the, you know, and then. Uh, but that, but that's, but that, that could, that could, that vote could still work, but the language would just basically reference the special permit criteria. Uh, through legal counsel's advisement.
So Yicheng, do you want to make the motion and say what it would be?
My only reservation would be, I, I don't recall people doing that for the other towns, like, there wasn't, there weren't other examples of other towns having special permit for this, it was just like this, and, you know, period. Um, so I don't know what the, I, I just don't know enough why that would be.
Well, some of the towns may have really strict building codes, so.
Well, to be, to be honest, I think that the. I think the clear reason, and this is a guess, and I, I really want to tell you very clear, very clearly that this is a guess. But all of these, all of these other towns have lower heights than we do, so it doesn't matter as much, why would they have to go through, it's more, it's sixty-five percent. It's what you got, you're, you're looking at a thirty-six foot height max anyway, and they're basically like, just figure it out. Because they're just more, they're just more, they're harder, we, the, our zoning bylaw, regardless of what anyone says or doesn't say. The numbers are forty feet, two and a half stories, that's can be great and beautiful and subtle. Or it's horrible, right, I mean, that, it, it, so the idea is that that extra four feet, it doesn't seem like a lot to most people. But that's the difference, so I think that would maybe be the only reason.
Um. To not do a special permit, because we're already being generous.
You know, I mean, well, no, I'm just, Yicheng is like saying, why, why don't you see this in other towns, and I, and I'm basically saying, I think other towns are just a little more strict. Um, I think that, I think that's why they're not really allowing that, I think that, that makes sense, because. They're just more strict in their heights in general, like they're, um, I think, I don't know how long ago it was that they decided that. You know, forty feet is just, you know, that's, that's.
Yeah.
It's really dirty, yeah.
I want to go back to the conversation I had, Diab, about this, is like, where does it affect the town, really, it's, it's not about the flats, or like the, the areas that have a lot of. Um, square footage of, of lot size, it's, it's about towns that, it's about the part of town that is more dense, and so you just feel a little bit tighter and tighter, and so. Are we then putting more limits on people who already have, having, you know, trying to figure out space, and, you know, is it, is it just more oppressive? That we're doing this, or?
I mean, the, there's, yeah, there's no doubt that there, there, there is that, that the idea is that. Still, there's a physical limitation to a, a street to that's comfortable, right, there's, there's like, I feel comfortable here, and then there's a certain point where it's not comfortable. And like, that's, that's what, that's what, that's exactly what the objectives are talking about, and like Cheryl had said, that. Uh, that second objective, it's, you know, it's iffy, and it's probably a little bit more than just iffy, right, like, is this gonna do that? No, because two and a half stories and forty feet, at the end of the day, is still two and a half stories and forty feet.
It's still ridiculous, no matter how.
Right, but it doesn't matter when there's like a hundred foot setback versus like a five foot setback at some of these streets, right? A four, forty feet at five foot setback is humongous versus just a humongous lot.
But, but they're not doing it, yeah.
I don't agree at all, I don't agree at all, because, you know, at forty feet and two and a half stories, you'd have fifteen feet floor to floor. And then seven feet on top of that, right?
So you'll never reach it, you'll never reach it.
You'll get a flat roof. I, I, it's just, you know, it's, it's.
Am I, am I hearing that we shouldn't, we shouldn't bring this to town meeting until we reduce the building height by town meeting vote?
I'm not hearing that. I think if we wait until we reduce town to the building height, we'll be here for a while.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is something that we can do now.
So, so to Yicheng's point about reusing existing homes in town. Um, I noticed that, um, at least two of the buildings that are coming up for demolition, um, application. Are in, um, the north part of town where the zoning is six point five. And most of the houses are old, or at least the houses that were being proposed to be torn down are old, that's why it's coming in front of this, because it's, it's a demo delay triggered by the age of the house. And in these cases, this is exactly what Yicheng is advocating for, is to be flexible and allow people. To build out the third floor, um, of these existing homes, so that there's more space on the third floor.
Yeah, but the people who are buying these houses and turn it, tearing them down are not people who live there now. They are people who know that they can build, they can tear down a house in one day, and put up a brand new house and sell it for one point five million dollars.
Okay, and when they put up that new house, it can be up to forty feet tall, and it can be two and a half stories by this definition.
Yeah, that's.
And will that ensure harmony with the size and scale of the surrounding built environment? Probably not.
But that's not what it's in front of us tonight, I just want to keep reminding people, we're not talking about changing the height, we're only talking about the language in front of us. Um, and so the real question is. I mean, we, we seem to be approaching a consensus that we were okay with this. I don't, I haven't heard any, I mean, we can all argue or discuss heatedly whether we should take it from forty feet down to thirty-five, but that's not what it's in front of us.
That's right.
So the question is, the only thing left, I believe, was, do we allow something greater than sixty-five percent by special permit? To allow some flexibility? We, we, and, and as Eastern mentioned, we have seen one case before us where the fifty percent dormer limitation didn't make sense. Because the way the house was already built. Required a larger dormer to accommodate headroom in the already built stairwell.
Right.
And we all agreed that that was an appropriate.
Condition.
Yeah, um, waiver of that condition.
I feel like a, a lot of us are still guessing what the seven feet and sixty-five percent might look like, and what, what might be testing the limits of that? And so if we have a little bit of give here and say by special permit, yes, we will look at this, because we, I don't think we're really certain on these numbers either. Right, so, so what, what are the possibilities here? We don't know.
And, um, to that, to that argument, honestly, um. I, and, and this is gonna sound like I'm trying to make it more complicated, but. A half story. Directly under a sloping roof, I, I don't think we need number one. That whole three foot thing just doesn't, it's too. It, it's gonna make all of this too. Um, it's a, it's gonna always be about hacking it, why can't we just make it really simple? Say it's sixty-five percent at seven feet under a sloping roof. Directly above the story below, I, I, you know, and then, and then, then we're gonna get, we're gonna get nice roofs with dormers and things that. That, you know, if they're not gonna meet that, then, then. It gets reviewed, I, I don't know, it's just about keeping the scale of whatever's on the set, the half story. Like, like proportioned down, reduced in some way, but it's not about, you know, two exterior walls at three feet. I mean, I think that just gets, I think that really muddies the waters, quite frankly, I think it's just a sloping roof.
Um, and sixty-five percent at seven feet.
Yeah, I just think we make it really, really straightforward, and it's one, one definition, not two, trying to negotiate between the two and understand why. Why there's more.
So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back just a bit, because I don't think that if we're gonna make that big of a change, I don't think we, I personally don't think that we've looked at. What the side effects of that might be. So if, if the, so I personally would, would, would be against that change. Moving forward.
Yeah, we did talk about that, Diab, that, like, bringing it in front of town meeting, the first part is existing, the second part is new. Maybe that's a little. Easier to bring in, but it's, it might be a little harder to navigate going forward.
But I think we've seen other towns where you do have these two. Conditions at the same time.
Yeah, and I.
I, 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 you know, I, I'm a little confused what's going on right now, because we seem to be going in circles, we seem to be coming to a consensus, and then someone grabs back, and then we come to a consensus, and someone goes back. So. I, we are using up a lot of time on this, and we do have to talk about the master plan implementation committee if we wanted to go to town meeting. So I don't know what to do with this right now. I mean, I'm happy to go forward with this, as we discussed, with the addition of a special permit. If no one else is willing to go forward with that, then we have to kill, then we, we can take a vote on that, and if that doesn't pass, then we can take a vote on the original language, and if that doesn't pass. I think we lost Sally.
So if we move this, then we still have a one more, one more layer before we submit it to town, town meeting.
So, right, correct, so, so, yeah, where we are right now is September, September tenth, we, uh, we give it to. Um. The select board manager's office, town council, that's what's being submitted to, and the town clerk's office, like that, that's what's being submitted to on September tenth, because all the articles for everyone are due to those offices on, on the tenth. Then there could be changes later on, then there would be official amendments. From the board, from what was introduced, um, you know, after that. So this is certainly not the last bite of the apple, uh, but usually those types of things are very minor. Very minor things, or they're, they could be very minor things that had very large implications that everyone kind of agreed upon, but that, you generally do not. Want to do amendments, i- is it, is it, is a practice, it's more of, the language should be near final. And, and, and where legal is basically just making sure that it's, it's exactly what you're in, the intention of the board was, and that it is, um. That it is looked at, looked at that way, uh, from all sides, so.
Okay. So, so I make, I make a motion to move. Um, this amendment with the wording, with the, with, with, with the amendment that we add a special permit. I don't know if that's the correct wording.
Yeah, a special permit provision, uh, yeah.
And, and, and before we vote on that, I want to say that the reason, Cheryl, that, that we.
Technically, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So we, so we need, we need, would someone like to second that?
So I have a question, sorry. Are you motioning for this language?
This language as is with the amendment to add, um, uh. To, to do more than sixty-five percent with a special permit.
And, and what I wanted to say, Diab, why I would second that, but I wanted to comment on Cheryl's comment from before about taking out the number one on this.
Yes, but we can't do that, because we have a motion on the floor, so we, the only thing that can happen now is, is we can either second the motion or no one seconds the motion. And if, you know, I will, I will do chair privilege if no one wants to second that motion, to second it, but.
Well, I actually would second it, but I wanted to explain why.
You just need to second it, and then we can, really, we, we just need to second it, and then we can have a discussion if we need to.
Okay, it's done, it's seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion by Yicheng and a second by Sally, at this point, we can discuss the motion. Or we can move directly to a vote.
So I, I would like to discuss the motion.
I just want to point out that it's now.
I'll be really quick.
It's now nine seventeen, and I have no idea where we are on our agenda, but I assure you, we have blown through it.
Right, so I'll be really, really quick, the reason that I'm seconding this motion and retaining parent's statement number one. Is because we do want people to not make that penthouse kind of look that Yicheng's sketch as a, as an unadvisable hack that we would not present to the public. Um, and so that is why I was seconding the motion and retaining the statement number one.
Okay. So, um, any further discussion on the motion?
I, I. Would like to have a good reason to not have a, um. Special permit. Exception to the sixty-five percent, but I don't have anything to support that right now, I think sixty-five percent for a half. A half story attic space is, is more than enough space, and, um. And I don't, um. I, I just, I'm, I'm not convinced of supporting a. An amendment. Or a special permit, is what I mean, sorry.
The amendment to add a special permit provision.
Yeah. I think we should go with the language that we have now, um, without a special permit clause, and that. And we should, um, really work on how the information gets presented at a meeting. I think the language is, is good, it's supported through other towns and what other towns have done, um, in many ways. I, I think I heard that there are not special permits. Um, in the language of other, of other towns, is that right?
I believe that is correct, I did the research, and I do not recall that there was an incidence of special permit provisions.
Okay, so at this point, we have two things we can do. Um, the motion can be withdrawn, or we have to take a mo, or we take a vote. Um, the motion can be withdrawn, or we have to take a mo- or we take a vote on the motion.
I wanna withdraw the motion because I, I hear what Cheryl's saying and I, I do want to make it as simple as possible.
Okay, so I guess the motion is withdrawn. Is there another motion?
I would move that we, um, approve the proposed definition for half-story as presented, um, by Eching this evening for presentation to town meeting in November.
Okay, so what we're seeing in front of us right now.
Without the graphics.
Without the graph, well, right.
Well, but I don't know, the graphics that are on this page, Eching, are those included in your statement of without?
Correct. I, I don't, I don't know if, before, um, the tenth, if we would be able to do something that is a little bit more clear. These were just more explanatory.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would say that the language is perfectly clear as to what is intended. So that you can read this language and clearly understand what the deviser and the numerator are. So, is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna assume we're going directly to a vote, so I'm gonna read the text of the motion. Uh, the motion is to redefine the definition of story half or half-story. This to be the space of a building directly under a sloping roof in which, one, the bottom of the roof rafters intersects the interior faces of at least two exterior walls and not more than three feet above the floor of this space. And two, the total floor area that has a clear height of seven feet or more is not more than sixty-five percent of the total square footage of the floor area of the story directly beneath. So, roll call vote, please. Um, Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Eaching Scott?
Aye.
The obvious I four zero. Thank you very much. Um, Brian, can you remind us where we're supposed to be at this point in our agenda? I could remind us too.
Yeah, so right now, um, it's, um, we are supposed to be in the executive session at nine fifteen uh, to nine forty-five, uh, for mid-year planning department re- review and then nine forty-five for the planning board.
Right, so, um, we, we have a dilemma in that, um, I mean, the board can choose to say that we do not want to deal with the master plan implementation committee this town meeting. Uh, but that would delay it until spring if we wanted to go forward with the standing committee, having a, the standing committee of town meeting, which means it can't get started until next summer.
Right. I, I would, I would suggest that we, um, postpone the mid-year planning department performance review sadly. Um, and proceed until nine forty-five with the discussion of the master plan implementation committee uh, language to be presented to town meeting in the fall.
And how does the rest of the board feel about that?
That's fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, our apologies to everyone who is hoping to get a break from the planning board for the next half hour as we run into executive session, but, um, we're gonna dive right back into, uh, town meeting article. And we are going to be discussing, um, master plan implementation committee. So, um, you should have in your packet a um, a revision of the memo that Sally wrote um, based on input from the board and something I wrote up years ago or months ago. And so that, I took that, the document and I turned it into something which I thought would be appropriate for a, um, background for a warrant article. And you should also have received via email, and this is not in your packet, and for everyone out in TV land, uh, this is a public document, so if you would like to see it, please contact planningboard@winchester.us for the text of this. Um, but why don't we, uh, why don't we move to the, um, to the background memo that is in your packet, so we can go through that. This, this, the warrant article text really just follows that to a great extent. So Brian, if you could put up that other document, please.
It's one that had the little shadow boxes on the front.
It's the one with the nineteen eighty-five design shadow boxes, cause that's.
Page twenty-four.
It's all I could figure out how to do.
The only, the only thing I wanted to say was in the second paragraph, the use on the second line of the word physical. And when I saw that, I circled it and I wrote, but it's more than that.
Well, this is a quote directly from the master plan, so.
Oh, well, so, okay, never mind.
Yep, that's where these two quotes are directly from the mass Winchester master plan. Um, I thought they did a good job of laying out exactly the purpose of the plan and the purpose of the implementation committee. So that's why I pulled these quotes.
Well, no, and I think they're good quotes and I think contextually, I, I think it's fine. Never mind what I said.
Okay, so, um, are there any, why don't we directly go to, does anyone have any comments about these? Or do we wanna just move through this linearly and examine it?
Where I had next questions was under composition. Which is on the top of the third page of this document. And where I got confused was, okay, so there's, and actually it was clarified by the, um, actual language, because in the overview, it, where it says MPIC members should have, to ensure we done it, we'll have nine members with one ex officio member. Does that mean plus or including?
That's a good point. It would be plus.
Okay, so it's plus that.
Yes, it's two, it's two members per topic area, one youth representative and one town planner.
So nine members plus one ex, and then it says all members are eligible to vote on all members, on all matters. Does that include the ex officio member?
Yes.
Okay, that was that question. Um, and then, um, having looked this whole thing over, the only other point that I had was at four point eight point seven at the very end.
Okay, so that is getting into the actual warrant article, so why don't we hold off on that?
That's fine.
Until, see, are there any other, are there any comments from Eching or Cheryl?
Not at this moment.
Okay. So.
Cheryl, are you cool?
We seem to have lost Cheryl's video.
So, well, we're waiting for Cheryl to see if she's got any other comments. Can I just go back to four point, actually four point eight point six?
Okay, Brian, you wanna swap that in? That's in the, uh, that won't be in that document. That'll be in the one I sent out this morning, or last night or whenever I sent it.
Life is a blur.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's the warrant article text.
There we go. So, in four point eight point six, um, it says duties and then it says to that end, and then it says the MPIC will work with. And then the MPIC will present reports. Um, so scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Um, there. And in the last sentence of this paragraph, just for town meetings sake, change providing to provide.
Oh, yes, that is horrible English.
I just wanted us to look good in front of our peers.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Um, and then that's the only minor thing, but then when we go to four point eight point seven, my question, Deab, is it appears that in year two, the C two, the C two and the, yeah, the C two and the D two um, are renewing after the end of one year.
That is correct.
And that was an intentional thing, right?
Yes, in order to meet the goal of not having more than three and less than two change every year and not having more than one change per topic or per theme. And as far as I can tell, the only way you can do that is if two theme representatives get a one year.
I mean, I think this actually is like really masterful that you figured this out, but that's.
It just was me moving cells on a spreadsheet until it worked, so.
That's just my personal opinion, others chime.
Yeah, so this would actually, this table would actually not be part of the text. This is just something I put together to prove that we could actually meet the requirements. Um, I'm still a little worried that we've missing Cheryl. Cheryl, are you still there?
I'm here. I'm just.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I, I was, I was listening, but I didn't take a bio break, sorry.
That's, that's quite all right. So the, oh, so the, the big difference between what the board has seen prior to this and these two documents is the way that the committee is appointed. And so Brian and I had a discussion with Heather Von Mering, the town moderator, last Wednesday to underst- to get an idea of how town, standing town meeting committees worked and how they were selected. And she pointed out that having a large appointing committee was extremely unwieldy. And that getting people to meet together and then having them going through essentially nine candidates would, just was not efficient or effective. And she noted that the, all of the other committees that are in the town that are standing committees have really much smaller committee, appointing committees. And the people on the committees are either the town moderator or, and chairs of other committees. So, it makes it much easier to get people together. And she suggested that we essentially create multiple selection committees based upon the theme of the master plan. And what I did with that idea was try to come up with the parties who would be most interested or have the most ex, most at stake in those particular themes.
Did you draw, Deab, from the actual, um, what did she call it? Jen Goldson called it responsible parties?
I did not. I, I, I drew from our matrix that we came up before. Um, they are all responsible parties, but there's so much overlap when you look at these that I really thought since we are going to have smaller appointing, if they, if we choose to have the smaller appointing committees, that they should be really focused. So for instance, you'll notice that, Brian, if you scroll up, please.
Four point eight point three.
This is really well done, Deab.
That, if you look at the, the community one, I actually included the town moderator is, is on the youth representative, but also in the, the fourth one. Now, keep going, Brian, please. The last one, building community group, the moderator is involved there as well because part of building community was working with um, government and town meeting and representatives. So, I, I expanded that to include the town moderator because looking at, one of the important things that the moderator pointed out is the role of the moderator is to ensure that the standing committees are actually, that the membership of the committees serves the the goal of advising town meeting. And that her position on some of these, on, as, as part of the appointing committee was to make sure that the voice of town meeting was heard when things were appointed. So for instance, uh, the, the FinCom is appointed by the select board, the chair of the select board, the chair of FinCom and the town moderator. And her role in there is to mediate to make sure that town meeting gets, is, is, is represented.
Right.
So, there is a role for town moderator, I think, in the building community group. I also introduced in one of these, I introduced the council on aging. Uh, I forget which one it is in, I believe it is. It's connecting people to places. Um, this was, people to places is all about, um, physical movement of.
Yeah, it's mobility.
It's mobility, thank you. And so I thought a very important, since we do have a, a significant population of people who are, let's just say, over sixty, over fifty, that we should have that representation. So these are all, these are all, obviously, we can change these. Uh, it may be that you think that there are too many people on these committees. There's certainly not nine, but there aren't three. Um, and you may decide that it's, we should go back to our original idea of saying that we should have a single selection committee with members from all of the, the different, um, the, those stakeholder committees that we came up with previously.
So my immediate reaction is that I think that what you and Heather came up with, um, madam moderator, um, is, it's a really, um, good, um, stab, if not outcome itself, for how to build this committee. I thought the appointment of members section was, um, well done.
A lot of this, thank you, but a lot of this does come from, it was really Heather seed, planting the seed and then.
Yeah.
So.
Right. But I now seed the floor.
It, it looks like the appointing will demand a really strong conductor and somebody to really pull this orchestra together. So, you know, I trust that there, there are people like that, or Deab, that you're gonna be taking over that and I, I trust that you would do a great job.
Well, thank you. Uh, but yes, you'll notice that somehow the planning board made, made it sway onto every single appointing committee.
Well, and that's, that's as it should be because the master plan is a responsibility of the planning board.
Well, yes, one, one, one can certainly say that, yeah.
It, it is, it is in our state charter or our state commission, whatever it's called, that we shall prepare and then make sure that it happens, that there is a and is followed a master plan. It's like, it's our thing.
It's our thing. It's our thing to produce it. Um, it's, it's not our thing to make sure it happens, but this, this, this town planning board seems to want to actually do something with it.
Well, so, and that, that gets to the question of authority and I think that we had, we had a very good, deep conversation, which I don't wish to revisit, other than to credit it, to say that, um, that the planning board, um, that the master planning com- implementation committee is independent of the planning board and we made that decision because um, we wanted to sort of, um, it's not share the stage, it's that we wanted to have many accountable parties or as Jen Goldson called it, responsible parties to the success of the implementation. It's not all on us. So therefore, the, the authority that we have is, is, um, described in our, um, mission and duties and responsibilities. And we count, we consciously came up with that.
Yes.
And that's a good thing, I think, we came to a good outcome.
So, if we wish to move forward with this warrant, then I think that the, 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 we, the, uh, the, the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing words. The composition of the appointment committees can, I think, be changed if we want, we changed a little. It's not a significant change to this committee. Um, but overall, this would pretty much with a couple of changes that were suggested by the town moderator. One minor one was to remove the twenty thirty master plan to make it more timeless. And that's, that's a good point. To just call it the master plan. I think I had, I used the twenty thirty in one point. But I'd really like to hear from Cheryl and Yi Ching as to how they feel about moving forward.
Yi Ching, do you want to go? I, I have some thoughts, but.
Go, go ahead, Cheryl. I'm still thinking.
So I really I, I appreciate bringing in very specificity about the master plan into this document. I think that's really valuable. And I think the way that, that that DAB, you and Heather identified how other aspects of committees and, and people involved in the town have have a have a stake in the master plan. But I, I kind of feel like this is creating more politics for than, than what I sort of understood the mission to be in the beginning, which is that, that the master plan needs representation among the committees. Representation is probably the wrong word, but needs, needs to be advocated for through other groups that are active within the town and are making, are talking about and, and thinking about the future of the town through their own, their, what, you know, what they're given to, to work on for the town. So to just be, for as an example, is that, you know, the historic commission. How are they, how are they reminded of what's in the master plan that that is a part of the decisions they're making that, and, and, you know, what's the how are they thinking about about the master plan in their, in their work? So that's the advocacy piece. The collaboration piece is kind of the, the idea that that a master plan is like, like a map, you know? And as well as the research. And then the communication piece for me was always people being able to come back and, and really communicate to the planning board, but with each other about, about about the master plan. And one of the things that I heard recently, this is some weird quote from probably World War Two, is that there's like, there's no battle plan that is that remains intact when the war begins. So there's always, yeah, always something.
survives the enemy. Yeah.
Exactly.
Oh, my God.
So can, can we, can we, can we scroll back up, Brian, and let's take a look at the duties and responsibilities? Or is it down? I forget where it is. I mean, I
Did I get really way off track? I apologize.
No, I thought that was a really sobering and grim and relevant grim.
I, 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 I am, I am trying to understand where it is. So.
If we create more committees and we create more, more people involved, and this is back to you know, the original thing, is that we just end up wielding this, you know, this huge.
So let me respond to something, what Cheryl's saying with, with just a reference to a comment that was made in the task force meeting the other evening, which is one of the task force members asked a question about the master plan that we're, we're quote eighteen months into it and how much have we gotten accomplished so far?
There was the housing production plan.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, so that was a mistake. So, yeah, so that, they, they thought they were talking about a downtown master plan, actually, which didn't exist. And, and so, so, yeah, it was a confusion. But so, so they weren't actually asking about the twenty thirty master plan. They were trying to reference a downtown master plan that hasn't begun yet.
This doesn't exist. Okay. Well, that's helpful clarification.
I need to, I need to ask Cheryl one question, please.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're at the duties piece. I got it.
Yes, but let's go back to your question about all of these committees. These are merely to appoint members to the board. They have no other role. They are merely appointing committees. So once they choose the members, they go away for another year.
I misunderstood. I thought these were like subcommittees that then reported.
Nope. They just, all they do is they are focused on their areas to make sure that the people on the board are competent in these areas and will represent their concerns. So there really is only ten people on the board. Two people are chosen, or eight people are chosen by these committees, two people by each committee, and then they go away for a year or if there's a vacancy. So.
So, so will the person, will the two people being chosen be selected, let's say, under ensuring sustainability? Will it be someone selected from the same, you know, the climate action?
They will, they
Or the planning board or, you know, it's kind of, it's a little
It's, it's an open, they will be residents at large who will apply for these boards.
Okay.
There is no constraint. The only constraint is that you are a resident. So anyone can be on these committees.
Including non-citizens.
That's correct.
Yes.
It's, it's
It's important.
That is important. Thank you, Yi Ching. That's really important.
Yeah. A number of the other ones, Cheryl and I went through them today. We looked at them. The ones that say voters are all having to do with some sort of money, financial issues, but certainly we want this to be open to residents.
Absolutely.
That was an explicit choice.
Yeah.
So, so
I like it.
Now, so let us move down to, to, to get at your concerns, Cheryl, about what the duties are. Four eight six lays out the duties and responsibilities. And Brian, if you scroll up to the first set of bullets, is that, nope, nope, sorry, I keep saying scroll up. I mean, if you go to four eight six and reveal the first set of bullets, there we go. So the MPIC is supposed to be the central body which provides information to all of the other parties, which is essentially the, the storehouse of information so that everything is coordinated. And there's a further part which says that there we go. What happened to it?
Yeah, it looks like this got cut off here.
Oh, no, you know what? I had to
That's the next page.
I had to print mine twice because it did a weird thing. It cut out part of something when I first printed it.
This is not the text that, this is really messed up.
Yeah.
Do you have the PDF, Brian, rather than the Word document?
Yeah, I'll get that up.
I, I think the problem is, is that I don't have Word. And so what's happening is that it's messed up.
Right. It did do a really weird thing. The first time I printed it, it cut out a whole section and then I went back and reprinted it and it fixed it.
Well, if it's a PDF, it should be fine. It's
Yeah, it's four, it's four eight six that got messed up, Brian.
Yeah. So right here, you'll, right there at that page, you'll see that
There you go.
periodically review progress towards master plan and adjust strategies to, so the idea is that there is feedback back to the planning board, Cheryl, you were concerned about. So the idea is that we're going to be, the, the MPIC will work with the appropriate parties to bring back and discuss what, what's going on. So Brian, I know that you, maybe you can figure out how to copy and paste from the PDF into your Word document to get the words right.
Sure. No, I can, I can figure that out.
Yeah, I, I don't know what happened. It's, it's, if you don't have Word, you don't have Word. That's just where it is.
Word.
Well put. So, um,
So what was Cheryl's question?
So I, I misunderstood. I thought we were creating a committee of subcommittees. That's
Oh, no, no, no. Okay, I get it now. I remember. Yes, 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 yes.
That's what I thought was happening. And I, but I'm, um,
So I think
So has, has, has it been, had, did you and Heather talk about what the, I mean, are we talking about a quarterly sort of, you know, collaboration between the planning board and this committee? What, what's kind of, what's the
It says here that, that, that in addition to the MPIC presenting at spring and fall town meetings, they'll also provide similar reports in the interim. So that would be August and February.
February. Okay, I see it. Okay.
And they are, one of their duties is to work with the planning board. So that, that problematic second set of bullets, Brian, is so this is sort of feeds into the they will be working with us on a continuing basis outside of just the reports.
See, I think what's really great about this committee is that it's very easy for towns to shelve expensive reports. And there's great energy and intention that went into producing this plan. And somebody should pay attention to it for the next ten years. And it might as well be the planning board, or if not us, than an appointed body, which this would be.
So I, I want to draw our attention back to the time and Yi Ching, you had seeded the first Cheryl.
I, I, I share Cheryl's concerns about the, I, I know, I understand what she was not understanding, but I am concerned about the bureaucracy and sort of the, the number of parts that have to come together in order for it to go forward. And I would want to figure out, I, I really appreciate the limits and the rules set for this so that this structure can happen. But I would worry about this, the rigidity of the master plan, the battle plan, you know, once, however Cheryl eloquently put it, you know, that, that plan needs to be a living document and, and continue to change with, with, I'm hoping, a, a group of people who are able to have a flow to work together. And so I, I worry a little bit about too much intervention and stuff for it to have some space to grow like a plant to, to start to figure out how to do this stuff. So I mean, I, I really appreciate all this, but it, it's, um, I, I'm worried about the rigidity and the, and the red tape and bureaucracy, but you know, that's, that's not where my mind goes when I, when I think about these things. So I really appreciate your input into this.
So the master, the, the master plan is still completely under the planning board's control. So we're not seeding any sort of authority in terms of revising it or moderating it or
I wouldn't mind seeding it. I, I would just, I just, I'm just worried that this, this collaboration of this group would be too, there would be too many interventions to make it so that it can start to, to work.
Well, what, what is it about the structure of this group that you find problematic? Is it
Well, the, the nine, the nine plus one. So like, I mean, even that, when the select board chair mentioned that too, it, it just seemed big. But, and then also sort of the, the staggered timing of people coming in and out. And the number of, you know, reports and, and sort of bureaucratic things that it has to do in order to, to fulfill it. And I, I would hope that those things help it encourage the group to do its job. But I also wouldn't want it to be like an impediment, right, to, like, there are too many things to do in, to, to fulfill this thing. So however, we can provide an environment for it to grow and to, to have a life of its own and have the master plan be like a living document and
we can, so, so the, the staggering of seats is exactly to provide continuity so that people don't, so that's, you don't have mass changeovers in the board. And so that's
That is very typical. Sorry to interrupt, but that is a very typical stagger start of
Yeah. Yeah, with, with nine, yes, sure. But with the, the nine, it only has, oh, you're six, one different, with the nine seats. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it repeats after year three. At, at year four, everything is set.
And Yi Ching, I want to point out that the second bullet in the second set of bullets in, in, in four point eight six includes adjusting strategies to reflect new challenges opportunity. And I think that speaks very much to this as a living document.
I mean, I like the term living document, so we could just amend, we can put that in as, as sort of the oh, there's a word for this. The, well, I'll just call it a goal. We can add that to the second period. So the other bureaucracy in terms of, so we have, it is a large board. We discussed the reasons why we wanted to have two members for each theme was to ensure there was continuity in case because with a small board, you, you, you discover that a lot of people, you, you, if you have too many people not showing up, then you don't get anything done. And so there's a, there's a tension. If we wanted to do a smaller board, I think we discussed seven to nine. I don't know how we would make a decision as to what would we do about the themes.
Right.
So I don't think nine is too large. I think that there's redundancy in the board, which I think is important. I, I imagine that there were some people, that you will not always get a nine-person board to meet, but you will have enough people there that it will continue to be able to function.
What is a quorum for a, a ten-person board?
It would be six people, I believe. We don't actually have anything about Quora in here. Is that a word? Forums? I don't recall any of the other boards. It's a public body, so it would, it would follow whatever rules there are for public bodies. And I don't know what that is. I think it is just a numerical majority.
Okay, so that would be six, which is fine.
So that would be six.
Yeah. And, and frankly, the fact that they're spread across these different themes of the, of the master plan, but that as we all know, all those themes are related. It's like a big, you know, spider web of impact and vision. So, I mean, if you've got a quorum of, of six people in a room and they're meeting and they're looking over the progress and they're planning out their strategies for town meeting where there's going to be a vote, it's going to advance or, or, or delay progress on some key thing that would move us closer to our master plan, you know, re, vision, reality. It's really important work. And, and I think that if you get six people in the room on a ten-person board, a lot can get done.
No, I appreciate this. And I, I think that it's a real nice framework. And we should definitely, you know, move it forward so that things can get going.
Can I ask, can I ask one more question about kind of getting back to the, the, the question of bureaucracy and authority and all of that? Because I think in, in terms of advocating for the master plan, if it's really truly a living document, then I, I think creating a body or a board of people who think they're empowered because of their expertise or their appointment and, and words like effectively implemented. There's, there's certain things about the duties and the responsibilities, I think, DAB, that sound really like rather than being an advocate for the, the master plan, it's almost like being, um, I don't know. I, I just, I'm, I'm curious whether or not it's really, um, a, a group of people who want power or they want, um, you know, and that they're, that that it's not about educating, um, it's more about, you know, saying, oh, you can't do that because it doesn't, you know, that the master plan is more important, you know, something like that.
We, why don't we scroll to the, to the duties and responsibilities? And, because I, I recall thinking about that.
It's four, eight, five is the mission statement.
Right.
And I think I might have the wrong one because everything I've got doesn't have the numbers next to it. I'm not sure why.
So the reason why is what you're seeing is the, I sent out an email last night with the text of the warrant article.
Okay.
And what you're seeing probably is in the document, uh, in the packet, there is what I call the background information.
Right, right.
And so they should be almost identical in wording.
Without the numbers.
So, let, um.
So Cheryl, I think that your point on the mission statement, four, eight, five is the word effectively, right?
Wait, well, the mission statement doesn't say effective because we didn't actually put it in our mission statement. So let's look at duties. I'm trying to understand the phrasing in duties and responsibilities. That's raising red flags for Cheryl. So.
Four point eight point five. It does say master plan are effectively implemented, four point eight point.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm completely, so that is the language that we agreed to.
Right. And I'm saying if Cheryl thinks that asking that the, or, you know, advancing that the mission of this group um, is to ensure that the master plan is effectively implemented, um, is too top down or not flexible enough or not mindful enough of the dynamic, living nature of, of the document, um, then, then we should discuss changing it?
I'm trying to understand why we agreed to this a few weeks ago and now we're changing it. I understand that change is inevitable. But I, I.
A living document.
Yes. And it's, we, we have to make a decision on this tonight.
We do indeed.
To remind people. So if you want to change the vision, please suggest some, some language which would make it clearer.
Well, I really like advocacy, collaboration, research and communications. We worked really hard on those four words. Right? To ensure that the vision goals and strategies, um, well, you could say are realized.
That again, it's like the master plan is the plan. When the, when the plan can change as soon as the battle begins.
But it's already built into the, we already have language saying that we will adjust this as time goes on. But you cannot have a, you cannot call it a plan if there isn't some structure. So saying that we are going to meet the goals doesn't necessarily mean that the goals are frozen. It just says that we have set up this framework which has goals. We've, we've, we've already said that we can change those goals as required. But we do want to ensure that it actually happens. So if all of this committee does is advocate without putting in some sort of more than advocacy, then we're essentially hoping everyone goes along. And while I, I, you know, you've been on this board for a number of months now. You know how difficult it is to keep track of things sometimes? Having someone coming in and saying, hey, here's a bigger picture. Here's where you stand in the bigger picture. What can we do to help you move forward that way is more than just advocacy.
Yeah.
And so that's why there's, and, and there's, there's language about assisting and providing advice and support and research. And so I think that the goal, the master plan commit implementation committee has to ensure because there's no other central body which is doing this.
I think that's right, Dea. I think if we could take a case in point, just take any one of the strategies that are in the action plan um, and look at it and say, what would the role of this committee be? So I just opened my book to Establish a Town Economic Development Task Force and Strategy A two point two. Okay, it's on page 23 of this very fancy shiny thing that is the action plan, right? And Establish a Town Economic Development Task Force to spearhead ongoing town efforts to promote and strengthen the economic health of local businesses. Okay, so what is the role of the master planning implementation committee? The responsible parties are the town manager and the select board.
Sally, I'm not sure we have time to do this. It's 10:05.
I know, we don't. You're right. But I'm trying to say that the, that, that, that's an example of saying that's effectively implemented simply means that they get something done.
So I'm, I'm more than willing to change the language, but I, I really need to have an idea of where you want it to be. I mean, is the vision statement the part that, that is, that is an issue?
You mean mission?
I'm sorry, mission. Is it mission? Is there something in the duties and responsibilities, or they're just called duties here because that's what they, that's what the rest of the committees have? What is it in here which needs to be adjusted so that it has the correct balance? I mean, I don't believe it's pure advocacy. I, I think that the, the board may not agree where on the spectrum at, between advocacy and action. There's a difference.
Well, collaboration and research are very active things and communication is too. That, that, you know, say you're, you're one of the two people assigned to one of the themes, okay? And that there are a dozen things that are in play around that theme that were, that are moving through the machinations of town government, right? And, and one of the things they want to know is more information about this. Well, that would be something that we could do. This, or not we, this, this committee would do is research.
Right, but that's in there, Sally.
Yeah, I know it is. I'm saying, this is a really, I, I, I guess I.
So I, it's really, I think this is down to Cheryl and Yi Ching to try to identify what, what language is making them uncomfortable and suggestions on how we can improve that language.
So I, I, can I just raise, and, and I guess what Sally just said raised a flag for me, which is let's say I decide that I'm going to, I want to be on the committee and I want to be on the committee under the, the, um, the topic, if we're, you know, if it's going to be, you're going to be appointed as an expert for a particular area of the master plan. And so I get appointed to balancing development and preservation. What, what, what committees and meetings do I go to? Who tells me what to go to where I participate in a way that I, I.
That's, that's up to the master plan implementation committee to determine. This committee will make a decision as to where they are, where they can provide the best input.
Okay.
Also, there's guidance.
Must be someone who's, who's, there, there's going to need to be some major leadership behind that then, if there's going to be people with four different, um, expertise or focuses, right?
I, I imagine that there will actually be people who have not only ex, not just straight expertise, but a lot, like, for instance, I'm on the planning board. I have zero expertise in architecture or planning. Yet somehow I found myself on the planning board. I think there will be people who have interest and energy and will be willing. But don't forget, there's also the town planner who is on this board who is there to provide continuity and structure so that they understand their charge.
So are we going to have like a master plan bootcamp that all the committee participates in? So they, they learn about the master plan and
Oh, yeah.
And then they are, are like sort of, they're, they have a, they, they clearly know the objectives that they're upholding.
Yes.
Yes. It has to be. Like, here's one for the North Main Street, and it says that the responsible parties are 75% this and 25% that. So if you're one, and that would be, um, under the historic preservation two person group that you were, but the, the, the people that are in these, that are referred to here, I mean, T-TAC is referred to and they're in, their primary focus is connecting people in places, right? Chamber of Commerce is referred to on their primary focus is economic development. So I think it's by definition a very, um, uh, holistic um, assignment of responsibilities.
Yeah.
And Brian, is this, what chunk of Brian's time is this going to be? Running this group and hurting these, um, people who are now, um, you know, been given the responsibility of implementing, um, the master plan action.
I mean, sorry, it's assumed obviously that I'd be going to these, I would imagine, monthly meetings. You know, at the least, right? And then helping to, you know, do that coordination facilitation. So this is not, this is not nothing. Uh, is definitely a chunk. Um, this goes back to, I don't know how many, including the master plan, but there's at least three other plans in the past 10 years that say, hey, maybe we need an assistant planner. So like, you know, that's not new, but that, so the answer is that it was, it's, it had always envisioned. It's even in this master plan, like I said, that an assistant planner should be hired. It was assumed that that would be shared. The, the implementation of this, of this very large 10 year plan.
Yeah. And, and you're, you're right, Cheryl. This is a huge, this is a big addition to Brian's responsibilities, but unless, I, I don't, I don't know any other way of getting this done. Every committee, so there's, I think there's a every committee that's set up is essentially, if you look at any of the town committees, getting back to your question about how do you know what they're going to be doing? None of the town committees has a, um, a founding document which states how they're going to be doing their internal procedures or how they're going to figure out. That's all up to the committee to decide and, and there are certainly, I, I, I imagine that the planning board will be very active with this committee in the early months in order to provide the support they need to keep going. And Brian's, the, 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 the point of having the town planner on this committee is so that there is continuity as planning board members come and go. Without that, then I think that this, this committee will become untethered. So as much, so there, I think there's, there's practical reasons for having the town planner or the assistant town planner. Hopefully we will get one on there.
I, I guess I, in my mind, and I, um, probably entirely wrong here, was that this committee was, um, a committee of people who cared about the master plan, um, advocated for the master plan and would be, um, involved in committees in the town that are strategically, um, you know, need to have master plan support in their, in their deliberations, in their, in their research, in their, um, in communicating, um, the importance of, um, decisions that impact the master plan. So I guess I'm, I guess I just was, that, that was my.
But that's exactly, you're exactly right.
But that's not what I'm reading here. I'm, I'm reading that there are these, there are people associated with certain aspects, certain concepts of the action plan that are now going to be deployed to wherever they're needed based on these topics in order to, to hold up, um, implementation of the, or to create, or to implement the master plan. So.
They're, 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 okay, can we go back to the duties, please?
I appreciate your patience, Dea.
I know, let's, yeah, let's go down to the bullets. Assist parties and understanding how they integrate with existing priorities and responsibilities. So we're not provide advice and support. I mean, I, I'm trying to understand what you, what you said you thought this group was doing was exactly my vision of what this group is doing. And the words on the piece of paper in my mind say that. So there's obviously a disconnect which I'm trying to understand.
Well, I, I, if you continue on, based on what Heather Mearon has, or Heather, then Mearon has
So.
Recommended, I think we're creating a much more complex, um, sort of ecosystem of, of people with with.
But, but, but Heather didn't, didn't set up the structure of the committee. The committee was, we, we agreed at the outset that we would have people who were selected based on the four core themes.
Okay.
So that was Heather, the only thing that Heather brought into this picture was a different way for the appointment committees to be formed, not the actual composition of the board. The composition of the board has been four, eight people, two per theme, plus a youth representative. And that was this board's decision. So if we wanted to, I mean, the, the idea was that not everyone can be, have expertise in all of these areas. And it's certainly, if you look at, and these areas have a lot of overlap. And so rather than look, so rather than looking at these as a person who is only focused is, say, sustainability and they're, they're a sustainability engineer and they know how to build a building, that I think would be far too specific a talent base. And so that's why, let's, if we go to the appointment committees, I forget which end we're on those. So let's look at, um, ensuring sustainability. So we do have CONCOM and the Sustainability Director and Climate Action. Okay, maybe that's a bad suggestion for an example. But, you know, they, we know that there's an overlap and we're not going to get people who have, I mean, for instance, let's look at the actual climate action and advisory committee. So these are the people who are supposed to advise the select board on climate, et cetera. While there are a number of people on that committee who have some expertise in the field, it's a really broad cross section. Um, there are people there who are just really interested in it because they see it as being a, a personal moral issue and they're on there because of that. So that's an existing committee which is specific to climate action or to the climate. So the word expertise, maybe we can strike that word. I don't know where, I, I believe it appears somewhere, but we can strike the word expertise if that, I don't know where it, it may be in here or it could be in the other document. Um, if, if the concern is that I, I if the concern is that you're going to end up with a bunch of on-call experts, is that your concern? I don't think we'll have that.
No, I mean, I think if, if we so keep anyone from the town can apply for this. And then they will be evaluated based on whether or not they have a certain level of expertise in, it says, in one or more of the air, the four areas, right? And then, and then they will be assigned to, um, the Select Board, Historic Commission, Housing Partnership Board, Traffic and Transportation, Disability Access. All nine, all eight of the committees, except for the planning board. I guess I'm just confused about how this works. I don't know why.
So I think what happens is that people apply for the committees and they may apply based upon their interest in one particular thing. So for instance, if I were to apply for this committee, um, I would probably apply for the, um, the first one. Because I only, so I would apply for balancing development preservation. So I wouldn't, you know, maybe I'm interested in another one, I don't know. But I would, I would say this is the group I'm interested in working with. And so my application would be handed over to this first group of people and they would. Evaluate my application based on all of their interests and. So that's how it would be done.
So, so each, each of the four areas with the, the committees that you've listed here. Those committees would evaluate the people applying for that particular group or that particular topic. But then what, how are they assigned to advocating for the master plan? Will they be assigned to the historic commission or?
They will be.
Stability and Access Commission? I mean, how, how do people? End up advocating? That's what I want to know.
That's up to the Master Plan Implementation Committee to figure out.
Also, I.
Known as Brian, right?
I'm sorry. I mean, the, the committee will say, okay, we need to, you know, they might, the, the whole committee might say, the first thing we need to do is to come up with, we'll look at the master plan and figure out which areas we can work on right now. And therefore we're going to prioritize things and we're going to visit these committees, which have to deal with these, which are dealing with these priorities and work with them. And then it might be that, you know, if they decide that connecting people to places is a longer-term thing. I mean, it's up to this committee to do what they think is right. We can't tell them how to act. We don't know what to tell them.
Yeah, but it's, it's all based on the map of the master plan, right?
Yeah, but it's.
That's their, their mission.
Yes, but they're the ones who have to figure out how to do this.
Uh, but these are a group of people that have, may not have any experience at all with a master plan or with experience with the town or the committees, right?
I, I guarantee you that will be the case.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
It's just like when I applied for this planning board, I had absolutely no other. I mean, to be honest, there are people who have. Who are still highly capable, but who don't have what we might consider to be explicit expertise. And I think that.
Huge learning curve for this group to be able to work together and to, and to figure out what they're gonna do where really understanding the master plan and, and being present for the committees that have the potential to ignore or have an impact on the master plan are, are, you know, there's just, there's no one from the community advocating for the master plan within those communities. And that's what I thought we were working towards.
I, I'm still, I'm, I. Sally, please go ahead.
So the master plan, action plan is, is organized not only according to the four themes, but within the four themes, there were specific strategies. And a very early draft of this document, I actually went and counted how many there were. And there's actually 65, and with each of the 65, there are sub-strategies. So meanwhile, we have all these boards and committees and commissions and, and councils in town. And they, they identify a need to change something, to make something better. And it turns out that in fact, that is, it happens to be that, that what they focused on is one of those 65 things. And so that's great because now everybody's working towards the same thing. And the Master Plan Implementation Committee can report to town meeting and/or the planning board that with regards to strategy number, blah-bity blah. These two, these two boards are moving full speed ahead to achieve this and their plan is to present it to this by this date, right? That's the report. Or, and one of those boards or committees, say it's T-TAC, says, you know, we, we just don't have the bandwidth in our board to, to research right now. What is best practice around the country on this one topic? Do you think the Master Planning Implementation Committee could assign a couple of people to go off and do this research and get back to us for our next meeting, which is in three weeks or whatever it is? So those are just scenarios, but there's a very organic process that comes out of our town committees and boards. And then there was this, this culmination of all this town work to come up with this plan that got translated into an action plan that breaks down into these 65 strategies, right? So there is a roadmap. It's, it's not, it's not like. And yes, your point is, yes, they should do bootcamp. They should know the structure and the content of the master plan to be on this committee. And the other thing I wanted to say was that just because you're assigned or just because you were appointed to be a representative on this one of the four themes, doesn't mean that when the committee is discussing, how shall we advance this one action that is being put forward by the Historic Commission? And what can we do to help it move forward? And you're not necessarily one of the people that was appointed for balancing preservation and, and, and development. You might be someone who was appointed to help with building community, but you've got really clear thoughts about this. It's a, it's a, it's a synergy of minds. Taking each of those four themes and each of those 65 strategies and saying who's working on it, who should be working on it? What can we do to move it forward and how can we support their efforts?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a, 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 I'm gonna get the word wrong, cross-jurisdictional, not the right word. This is a way of getting people who have disparate. To, to, to ensure there are no silos. And so in a sense, you can have people who, people who are selected for particular themes on this board are, are there to help translate between silos, but they're all talking with each other. I mean, if the, if, if the real concern is that this committee on day one will not have a framework or understand what it is that they're going to do. I assume that that would be the case because any new committee which is formed, which doesn't have a history to fall back on and learn, has to start from scratch. But we're there to help them. I don't know how you set this up in a different way. I mean, there will be significant challenges, yeah.
Diab, when the master plan was being developed, and I have to confess to being only peripherally involved sadly. Were there sort of a core of town residents who really, really got into this process and said, oh, this is great. I love this stuff?
We had the Master Plan Steering Committee, which was, you know, we had a, we, I don't know, we had 19 people. They were composed of precinct members, members from various boards. There were certainly a lot of, we, we met a number of people who were very interested in the master plan. We, we did a lot of outreach, so people knew about it. So there was. Yes, there are people, so I, I don't, I, I'm. We will get competent people on this board who are passionate and who will learn. And I expect that there will be an awful lot of learning because a lot of people won't understand how town government works. They don't, you know, there are a lot of people who don't understand how town meeting works. So I expect there will be a steep learning curve. But I don't know, it, it will, the, the implementation, unless we only include insiders. Then we will always have a steep learning curve.
We'll always have silos if we only include insiders. And I like what you said, Diab, about one of the, one of the byproducts of the way that this is structured is that it crosses silos. What you said, cross-jurisdictional.
Yeah, that's the wrong word, cross-disciplinary, interdisciplinary is the word I was hoping for.
Okay, yes, also.
I would also guess that people who are volunteering their time, we'd want to waste it. We just want to try to. Do stuff with it.
Yes, people don't typically, we certainly had people who were on the Master Plan Steering Committee who, I think because they were appointed. Shows not to participate. But this is a different, this is, this would be a different batch. This is a bunch of people who are actually going out of their way to volunteer. They aren't selected from a board. They weren't, you know, this isn't a requirement of being on a board that you have to be on this. This is someone stepping up just like you people did, saying, I want to spend all of my evenings until 11 o'clock doing this.
Oh.
So I, you know, every, you know. There is a lot of uncertainty in this. I agree. There's a lot of uncertainty of how it will be accepted by the other. Committees and boards in town. We have no control over that unless we provide, unless we put in safeguards so it looks like these people are willing to work and not to dictate. And I think that. I think there are safeguards in here to ensure that, but. You know, we, we give them as big, as much of a helping hand as we can and then they're on their own. But we're still going to be talking with them all the time.
Diab, your, your distinction between people who are willing to work and not interested in dictating, does that get to the heart, Cheryl, of what your concerns are?
Um, I, you know what, I, I think that I've done enough of challenging the, the. The. The idea of this being open-ended and being very. I, I think that, that it's well-written. I think that it's. It has very high aspirations and I, that concerns me. So I, I, I would say we, we put it out there, Diab and me. And we just really hope that there's the, the right kind of energy and, and focus. To. So that it finds its path, you know, I just don't. I see a lot of really good ideas and, and aspirations. I just don't know how it's going to get done, but you know. The people who are gonna, are, who are gonna raise their hand, they're either gonna be ready to work as a group and get it done or, you know, it's, it's our town and if they care about the town, then, then it'll, it'll work itself out. So I just wanted to be the dissenting voice and see if there was something that we could come up with that would maybe. You know, maybe it's not up to us to narrow in on this. Maybe the committee has to do that. I think that's what I'm hearing now that I've listened to your feedback on, on my comments.
Well, let me, let me just point out that, that the text that we see before us can be shaped. To some level. I think the important part is the gist of it is there. I've spoken too much, so.
Me too. I'm burned out. I like, I'm, I'm way beyond my. My mental limit right now.
So on the agenda, there was some other thing. I can't find my agenda now.
Do you want to just say, are we?
Are we?
Forward or we?
I think at the point, do we want to move this forward? I think there are a couple of, there's, I have two notes. One of them from the town moderator to remove the 2030. Another note to make sure that the language living document is put into an appropriate place so that we really get the feeling that this, this document is not set in stone. And maybe I can, I can tweak the wording. Certainly we have until the 10th. And if the board wants, they can send me language or send Brian language that I can put into this so that. It would better reflect more of that idea that it really is a living document. And we can't really do a full-up. Unless people want to meet again, we cannot. We, we would have to, if we want to have another session, look at revised language, we would have to meet again.
The only revision that I felt was really substantive and clarifying was on the backgrounder document, page three of four under composition, that it would say we'll have nine members plus one.
So the, the background.
That was a clarifying.
We can, we can change that at any point until the warrant goes to press.
Good, good.
Or actually it's until the, the, the town meeting members' booklets go to press.
Right.
So you did point out there was a, a, any Scrivener's errors we.
That's the only one I found.
On, on the, so.
The only other word that I circled that Cheryl raised was under 4.8.5, whether the word effectively is too judgmental or otherwise interpreted. 4.8.5, Brian. And, and, and because. The hour is late.
Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't you send me, send Brian different words that would replace effectively? And then Brian and I will get together and try to ensure that this comes across as a cooperative and collaborative rather than a. I, I think that's what the board wants. Again, I think we can tweak one word. We could tweak afterwards if we need to as a minor change. But if the board wants, if someone would like to make a motion that we bring this forward for fall town meeting with my. What is the word I'm looking for? Alterations? As discussed.
I would move that the document that Diab prepared with help from Heather Van Marin for tonight's planning board meeting, starting with 4.8 Master Plan Implementation Committee and proceeding all the way through 4.87, be presented to town meeting in the fall of 2021. And that between now and then, we work on the backgrounder, which I think is really close. And if there's any words that should be fixed, we have time to do so. And that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent. So we have Sally firsts, Eaching seconds, roll call vote, please. Let's go, Cheryl Wolf, please.
Aye.
Eaching Scott, please.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Diab Jerius says aye or zero. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Eaching Scott?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Cheryl Wolf?
Aye.
Diab Jerius, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you everyone so much for this discussion. Thank you Nancy, our. What do you do these days, Nancy? I am so tired. I apologize.
Takes minutes.
Secretary. Thank you Brian Zerkelli, Town Planner. Thank you David Gaultier from Windcam. Thank you town of Winchester people for another thrilling evening at the planning board. And we will see you all in less than two weeks. We have a joint meeting with the select board where we will hopefully hear a bunch of interviews for our fifth planning board member. Have a great couple of weeks, everyone, and happy September.
Good night.
Night.